Ladies and gentlemen, for sure the board of the county's legislature and the board at the first time.
For the vacation. Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we come to you thanking you and praising you for our great nation and our many blessings. Father, we pray that you will look upon this assembly of county leaders and fill us with the spirit of your wisdom. Wisdom to make decisions that would strengthen and prosper the citizens of our county. May we always act in accordance with your will and our decisions be for the well-being of all. And Father, we pray that you will be with the brave military men and women who are serving in harm's way. Be their constant companion and their strength in battle, their refuge in every adversity. Guide them, oh Lord, that they may return home in safety and victory. All these things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is the election of the chairman for the coming year. First thing we need to decide is what amount of vote the board desires to you. What was open?
Show of hands.
All those in favor of voting by show of hands, raise your right hand. The motion carries. Board is open for nomination.
I would move to nominate Ms. Linda Shook as chair. And if you don't mind, Mr. Presider, I'd also like to nominate Commissioner Odom for vice chair.
I second that nomination.
Any other nominations?
I nominate Richard Hayes for chair. And I nominate Mr. Odom for vice chair.
Aye.
Move nomination cease.
We'll vote in reverse order. All those in favor of nomination of Richard Hayes and Mr. Odom be chairman and vice chair, raise your right hand. I get two votes. All those in favor, Mr. Reeves' nomination of Ms. Shook. Who was your vice chairman, sir? All those in favor of Ms. Shook as chairman and Mr. Odom as vice chairman, raise your right hand. Ms. Shook and Mr. Odom are elected as the chairman and vice chairman for the upcoming year. The next item of business would be to adopt a resolution fixing the time, date, and place for your regular meetings. So there's a sample resolution on your agenda. You need to determine the date, which the suggested dates are the first and third Monday. And you need to set times when you want those meetings to occur.
I would move that we continue the times we've already established for the previous year. I think it's three and six.
That's a meeting at three o'clock on the first Monday.
Correct.
And either three or six on the second.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Reeves, on the second one, you'd want it at six, wouldn't you? Three and then at six on the second meeting for the public interest.
If that's the board's wishes, three is finally on either one of them. But I think sometime we base it on what the agenda carries. We'll have the option if we believe it that way.
Three and six.
Well, what I'm saying is that the board should have the option. If we have a very light agenda on the second, the third Monday, it may be just as beneficial for us to do it at three o'clock. But if you want to stick it at six, that's fine.
I was thinking six is a reasonable basis to allow the public, people at work, you know, to get off at five and have time to get here and get to a meeting if they wanted to.
No problem. I accept your man.
Three and six.
Yes, sir.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion that the regular meetings be held in this room on the first and third Mondays of each month. First meeting to be held beginning at 3:00 P.M., the second meeting at 6:00 P.M. All those in favor of that, please raise your right hand. If you're not, that'll be scheduled. And next, we need to examine the bonds. They're set out in your agenda on pages 10 and 12. The amount that is currently shown were set by the members of the board on previous occasions and have proved sufficient. Yes, ma'am.
Item number three on our abstract page said any employee who handles $100 or more at any one time. Where is that covered on? Is that?
That's in the basic contract we have.
So it's not listed on one of the schedules?
No, ma'am, I think that's on the page that shows it.
Okay. And how many employees do we have in this category? It's the first time I remember seeing this in here in four years.
I don't know how many we have, but, you know, just from, you know, almost every department has somebody that could handle $100 or more, from Parks and Recreation, Tax, Finance, Sheriff's Department. We have, I would say, a majority of our employees could handle money at one time or another.
John?
Yes, sir.
How can we put this bond out to bid?
Just the once a year with, we don't, we didn't bid this. This is part of our property liability coverage. You know, we did not bid it.
Okay.
Do you need a motion to approve these?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to approve the bonds as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. I think Ms. Shook needs to take them.
First of all, I want to thank my colleagues. I am honored and humbled by your support in electing me as chair. And I promise you I'll work hard to fulfill the responsibilities. With that said, let's get down to business here. Are there any additional agenda items?
Miss Madam Chairman, I need to add two items. The first, we've been asked by the Fire Advisory Board to add a purchase of replacement tanker truck for the Cape Fear Fire Department. We're suggesting consent unless there are, anybody wants to discuss that further. Folks are here to discuss it if that need be. And then the second item is an executive session to discuss a personnel matter at the end of the meeting.
Are there any objections to adding the Cape Fire, Cape Fear Fire Department request to the consent agenda? Any questions? Motion's been made to add that to the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. So our consent agenda is amended to add in, which is Cape Fear request. And under, I guess, item eight, after Commissioner's comments, we'll add the closed session to discuss a personnel matter. So now we need to officially approve the agenda. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please designate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The agenda is approved. Next is the approval of the consent agenda as amended with item N on there. We've done that, haven't we?
Yes.
Sorry. Okay. I'm just so excited, I'm just rambling on. Okay. Next item on here is public comments and...
You still need the motion to approve the consent agenda.
That's what I was in the process of doing, I thought. Okay. I need a, okay, we voted...
I think Mr. Womack was getting ready to make that motion.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
That's on my...
Okay. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Okay. Next on the agenda are public comments. And we've had three individuals sign up for public comments. And so I just would like to remind everyone, there's a three-minute limitation and so that the clerk can correctly get all the information entered into the minutes of the meeting. If you'll please state your name and your address. We would appreciate that. And first one on the list is Catherine Settle. And Mr. Hoyle will be the timekeeper.
My name is Catherine Settle. I'm 460 Sheriff Watson Road in Sanford. I'm a veterinarian at Sanford Animal Hospital. And my exception is the mention in the code about any dog picked up twice or impounded twice would be spayed or neutered. I have black and tan coonhounds. I have eight acres fenced in, electric fence at the top and bottom. When deer come up to the fence, I've had two of these dogs go over. It was at night, I was able to get them in by 2:00 in the morning, but one time, one stayed out over 24 hours. In addition to being great pets and part of the family, I do show these dogs and on occasion I breed responsibly. I do not want them spayed or neutered. I'm also a member of the Society for Theriogenology, which is the study of animal reproduction. And our society, I was on the committee, asked to review our position for the society and the College of Theriogenology on mandatory spay-neuter. And our position is, which you have in front of you, the American College of Theriogenologists and the Society for Theriogenology believe that the companion animal not intended for breeding should be spayed or neutered. However, both organizations believe that the decision to spay or neuter a pet must be made on a case-by-case basis. And this decision should be made between the owner and the veterinarian, taking into consideration the pet's age, breed, sex, health status, intended use, household environment, and temperament. And attached to this or with this is also the basis. And as you will see, there are pros and cons of having your reproductive hormones. Some reproductive hormones, they think, might help protect a dog against some cancers. So I think maybe one way we could circumvent this is if one of my dogs gets out, the first thing I do is contact Animal Control and tell them that I am actively looking for this dog and describe the dog. So what I would like is for some kind of exception to be made for those of us that have dogs that normally would never be let out, but on exception do get out, and I would prefer that they not be spayed or neutered. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Settle. Next item on the list, Steve, is that Quentin?
Bristow, but she's pretty much spoke from what I want to say too.
Okay. And the next one is Yvonne Sovereign.
Yvonne Sovereign, 228 Key Row, Sanford. I don't really have anything prepared, but I'm also addressing the same issue. As a responsible dog owner whose dogs are confined, I'm a breeder, I show my dogs. If you show your dogs, they cannot be spayed or neutered. I'm not against spay or neuter. My older ones, the ones that are no longer actively showing or breeding, are spayed or neutered. So I'm one of the responsible people. I see dogs, especially mixed breeds, running loose constantly, and I can understand, you know, that some kind of, something has to be done in that case. But I think probably the percentage of dogs that people are not responsible and they let them run, I don't even know how many of them are retrieved when they are picked up. So the people that are responsible, that take care of their dogs, that spay or neuter when necessary, but also have breeding animals and showing animals, shouldn't have to take the brunt of this for those people that are irresponsible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sovereign. Okay. Next item on the agenda is new business. And first item, we've had a request to appear before the board by Mr. Russell Noel.
Thank you. Little out of breath, I think I parked in tramway. Commissioners, I always get, for some reason, nervous when I speak with you folks, but, and I don't know him at times, I've been here, right? But please bear with me. First of all, I wish to congratulate the four of you upon your reelection, election. And it's personally pleasing to me to see some new people sitting there. Mr. Reeves, congratulations. Mr. Womack, congratulations. Ms. Shook, congratulations. Mr. Parks, congratulations. Along with my congratulations comes a few of my expectations of you as members of this Additionally, I believe that my expectations are shared by the majority of the people who voted for you. I recall some of you made certain campaign promises. One, to reduce spending and not raise taxes. That is, do what we residents and voters have to do. Create a very realistic budget and operate within that budget with no exceptions. We residents can't deficit finance, nor can we raise taxes to survive on our income. We have to eliminate unnecessary spending. You as caretakers, the county's revenues need to do likewise. Item two, to more effectively control the spending activities of both Board of Education and the EDC. I long believe that these two entities have always been given too much freedom to spend taxpayer money with absolutely little or no accountability. To either this board or to the taxpayers, must less publish objective and documented evidence of an actual and quantitative return on investment from their expenses. Personally, I'm sick of estimates with no follow-up facts later on. And above all, no playing around with statistical methods or models by either of these entities with the raw data to justify what they are doing. In some cases, simple grade school mathematics is the best way to provide facts straightforward and accurate. Please remember, figures don't deceive, but figures, but, excuse me, but deceive us figures. The above constitute the primary concerns I have at this time. Since I'm on the agenda and not a three-minute public comments person today, I would like some dialogue from every board member for the newly elected, re-elected, or still serving on what I have just said. If some or all of you have no comments or questions, I must conclude that maybe little has changed or is likely to change on these subjects. I stand here now, ready to respond to any question or comment any of you may have. I'm just a simple old country boy who truly believes in transparency, accountability, integrity, frugality, and promise. How about each of you? Thank you.
Any comments, questions?
Happy holidays.
I'm sorry?
Happy holidays and thank you for bringing those things to... Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing those things to our attention. Speaking for myself, I only made one promise, and that is to do the best job I can do for the citizens of this county. And I'll continue doing that work as soon as you're finished.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves.
All right. I'll say something, Mr. Noel.
I'm sorry?
I'll say something. Can you hear me okay? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Welcome. It's good to see you. I think I would like to say to you, I've heard you many times, express yourself to us. Those expressions have not gone unattended. We understand your position. I certainly do. I feel that we, as a board, have done the very best that we could and that we've made some very really fine strides. And this is an evolving process. Hopefully, the board continues to get better every single year because we are aware and awake to a changing marketplace, a changing society. So I hope that we are going to be flexible and we will look at every issue. We're pledged always to do the very best we can on behalf of every citizen of Lee County. And I want to assure you that this commissioner, and I trust all of the commissioners, feel the same way, that we will work together as a team. And sometimes we will please you as an individual citizen and sometimes we will not. That's the way it goes. But we are wide awake and alert and always ready to serve as a team to do the very best we can for our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Any other comments? I can assure you this, Mr. Noel, I think you're going to see a lot of debate on various issues, which is a good thing, a healthy thing. And I share your concerns and I do very much share the values that you listed in the last paragraph of your statement. So I thank you for taking the time to be involved and sharing your concerns. I wish more Lee County citizens would do that. Are there any other comments or questions?
Mr. Noel, thank you very much for coming and sharing with us. I've heard you before too when I've been visiting here and I appreciate your comments. I'm an old country boy too. So I appreciate where you're coming from. I'm also of the opinion that we should be responsible and accountable for everything that we do and hold the people that are under us responsible and accountable for your taxpayer money. And we tend to do that. I've already started working, setting up meetings with the different departments to try to bring myself up to speed. And hopefully through that, we can get a better picture of where our county is and where we need to go.
Thank you, Ms. Shook. Mr. Parks.
I'd like to add a few comments to what Charlie just said. Like Charlie, I'm interested in representing...
Could you speak into your mic, please?
Is that better?
Yes. Thank you.
Like Charlie, I share the sentiments of the voters. I think we saw, not only in Lee County, but all across the country, a wave of sentiment this last November the 2nd that signaled a sea change in activity on the parts of governmental bodies from top to bottom. I took that referendum very seriously. And I think you'll see, not only in my voting behaviors and my preparation for the board proceedings, that I too am concerned about excessive spending and living within our means. I made that one of my campaign promises and I intend to hold to that. The county, we've heard from a number of sources that the county faces some very severe revenue constraints this year, that we're not going to be receiving the same degree of funding from the state and the federal government that we might have experienced in past years, which makes for some difficult times ahead. I would add that I'm ready to meet that challenge. I'm ready to go line by line through the budget and to work with Mr. Crumpton and the staff in trying to identify areas that we can reduce spending. I would like to hope that we could even find a way, and I certainly will be looking for those ways, to try to even reduce the tax burden that we already bear in Lee County. And that is a sincere commitment that I make to try to look for those opportunities. I believe that's what the citizens expected when they elected us or reelected us to office this time, and that's what we need to stand up and do. I would also like to add that I think there are areas where we might need to change what we've been doing in the past. There are, I've heard some feedback from the committee during the campaign that said that there are some spending behaviors that we have that we ought to reevaluate. Perhaps look at what some of our neighboring counties are doing to reduce spending. Look outside the county area or the regional area, look at even other states and what they're doing, counties in other states. I think it's a time, and I don't share some of the optimism I hear about the economy turning around. I sense that we are wavering or back and forth currently and that we may have some even tougher times ahead. And I think it would be imprudent for this board not to consider the fact that things could get worse, not better, and that hope is not a method, that we need to, in fact, prepare ourselves for potentially even worse economic situations, even lower revenues in the future, and that we need to be prepared for that. The only way I... The only way I know to meet those kinds of challenges is to do what I was trained to do for many years, and that is live within our means and plan for severe economic constraints and have the ability to respond and not just wring my hands or wring our hands in the future, be able to respond to reduced revenue flows without having to share that tax burden back on the citizens. And I think that we owe that to Sanford and Lee County, and I plan to be one of those guys to step up to that challenge.
Thank you, Mr. Wong.
Okay.
Mr. Noel, I feel like this board has been very vigilant with the taxpayers' money. And we're going to continue to do that. But we have other boards we have to work with, and we're going to continue to do that and work with them and try to get things done in an economical and a way that works with the taxpayers and, you know, try to get the things that the county needs.
Thank you, Mr. Wong.
Any other comments? Mr. Noel, thank you so much.
Thank you, and I'd like to close with, first time in two years, since I've been addressing this board, that the majority of you folks said something to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Noel. I need to backtrack to the consent agenda. There were two, we have two Lee County retirees that were mentioned in the consent agenda by proclamation, and I just need to go back and read those proclamations and give recognition to those two individuals.
Gail's not here, is she? Gail Beasley is not here.
I think she started her second career.
But Linda MacArthur is here.
So are you officially done now with December 4th? Okay.
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Okay. This is a proclamation honoring Linda B. MacArthur. Whereas Linda MacArthur has served Lee County well since March 1st, 1993, when she joined the Department of Social Services as a clerk receptionist 3. And whereas Linda MacArthur was promoted to IM caseworker 1 on June 21st, 1995. And whereas Linda MacArthur was promoted to IM caseworker 2 on September 1, 1997. And whereas Linda MacArthur was promoted to IM investigator 2 on June 1st, 1998. And whereas her years of service with the Department of Social Services were marked by dedication of service to the county. And whereas she earned the admiration and high regard of those with whom she came into contact and the affection of her fellow coworkers who were proud to consider her part of the team. And whereas Linda MacArthur retired from Lee County government effective December 1st, 2010 with a total of 17 years and 3 months service. Now therefore, on behalf of the Lee County Board of Commissioners and the County of Lee, we do hereby express our sincere appreciation and thanks to Linda B. MacArthur for her faithful and dedicated service to Lee County, presented this 6th day of December, 2010. And you will be getting a signed resolution or a certificate in a nice frame that will be presented to you later. And, okay, now I noticed in the last, now there's a little typo there. Fix that. So I would like to say congratulations. Do you have some words?
Well, I'd just like to say a thank you to everybody, in particular to Ms. Potts and everybody at DSS. And, you know, I consider them friends instead of coworkers. It's been a good employment. Stressful work.
Stressful work.
But great folks to work with.
It is stressful, and I hope Brenda that you have a good fraud investigator to replace Linda. I know she was very valuable to the county, so I hope we've got a good transition team to go in. And Linda? I think we need to give you a...
Thank you.
Enjoy retirement and his grandchildren.
And while Ms. Beasley is not here, let me read her proclamation. Whereas Gail Beasley has served Lee County well since March 6, 1995, when she joined the Department of Social Services as Human Services Coordinator 2. And whereas Gail Beasley was promoted to Social Worker 1 on October 1st, 1996. And whereas Gail Beasley was promoted to Social Worker 2 on July 1st, 1997. And whereas her years of service with the Department of Social Services were marked by dedication of service to the county. And whereas she earned the admiration and high regard of those with whom she came into contact and the affection of her fellow coworkers who were proud to consider her part of the team. And whereas Gail Beasley retired from Lee County government effective December 1st, 2010 with a total of 23 years and 8 months service. Now therefore, on behalf of the Lee County Board of Commissioners and the County of Lee, we do hereby express our sincere appreciation and thanks to Gail Beasley for her faithful and dedicated service to Lee County, presented this 6th day of December, 2010. And it's my understanding Gail is not present today?
I think she's already started her second career.
Okay, okay. Well, we thank Gail for that, and she also will be getting a signed certificate that's framed.
Gail did a beautiful job. She worked in our adult services unit. She worked with our at-risk individuals in some of our guardianship cases. So she'll be missed. She almost backed out, but she decided she'd go ahead. I think somebody made her an offer that she couldn't refuse. So we'll miss her.
Well, I serve on your board, Brenda, and I have a tremendous amount of respect for all of your employees. I know they're doing lots of extra work with all the budget cuts and there's a lot of stress involved there. So my hat's off to all of them. Okay, now then, back to our agenda. And we're down to IVB under new business, a public hearing and approval of project for Lee Iron and Metal Company. And I want to say that this is the first time for this to appear before the board, so we're going to get some background information on this before we go into public hearing. And you are Mary Rusher?
Yes, good morning. My name is Mary Nash Rusher. I'm a bond attorney with the law firm of Hunter and Williams. We are serving as bond counsel for this issue. The issue before you today is a recovery zone facility bond to be issued by the Lee County Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority. The proceeds of those bonds will then be loaned to Lee Iron and Metal to be used for the construction and equipping of a metal shredding facility to be located at 1600 Colton Road in Sanford. Recovery zone facility bonds are an expanded type of industrial development bonds that were created by the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. For those of you who have been involved in these before, industrial development bonds are bonds that are issued by the local authority. The proceeds are loaned to a private company who uses them to build a private facility that then creates jobs and tax base in the county in which they're located. The benefit of these bonds is simply that the borrower is able to access capital at a tax-exempt rate rather than a taxable rate. Neither county money nor state money is pledged to the payment. County's revenues aren't pledged. The county's faith in credit is not behind these bonds. They are payable solely by Lee Iron and Metal. In this instance, the bonds will be purchased by BBNT and will be treated simply as essentially a loan between BBNT and Lee Iron and Metal. But they are able to get a cheaper interest rate because the interest on those bonds will be tax exempt in the hands of BBNT. Both federal and state law require that when these sorts of bonds are issued, you have to have a public hearing followed by approval in principle by the county commissioners. So today, this would be the public hearing. These bonds have already been received allocation. There is a limited amount of these recovery zone facility bonds in the country and then within the state. So the Commerce holds, the Tax Reform Allocation Committee allocates the ability to take advantage of these bonds out across the state as deals come in. The state received about $617 million. And again, this is just permission to issue these bonds. This is not money. It's just allocation of authority to issue the bonds. And so the company has applied for and received an allocation of authority to issue these bonds. The last step after the county commissioners will also be the local government commission approval. This transaction is on the LGC agenda for tomorrow. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. Scott Carpenter is here with Lee Iron and Metal. He is happy to answer any questions you may have about the project itself.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions?
I have a couple of fundamental questions. Who are the principals of Lee Iron and Metal Company?
Scott and Robin Carpenter, who are here.
Okay. And I'd like to, I'd like to know a little bit more about the location. I don't know where that is. I don't understand the impact that that will have on that particular area. I'd like to know that that is going to be a satisfactory and satisfying experience for all in the environment. And the other question that I have would be, if you could share with us, how these bonds will be paid back?
Let me address the second question, then I'm going to ask Scott to come talk about the first question. Lee Iron and Metal will sign a promissory note in favor of BBNT in which it will promise to repay those bonds. And it will be solely its obligation to repay those bonds, just as if it were a note, a private loan between BBNT and the bank.
And so therefore, in the instance of default, just to be the devil's advocate, that would be something that would be totally separate and apart from any government which we stand.
Yes, sir. And in fact, the way these documents are drafted, if you get to the point that there is a default or if there is, for some reason, the bonds would have become taxable, the bank is deemed to have made a loan directly to the company in order to take the authority out of the middle of that transaction since the authority doesn't contribute anything to it except the tax exemption. And it would simply be a workout situation between the bank and the borrower.
And you were going to talk to us about the...
I'm going to ask Scott.
Hi, my name's Scott Carpenter. I'm the president of Lee Iron and Metal Company. At the October meeting of the Lee County Planning Board, Lee Iron and Metal applied for and received a special use permit to build and operate a scrap metal processing facility at 1600 Colton Road, which is the former site of the General Shale Brick Plant.
Scott, this is an old brick yard.
Yes, it's now demolished.
Demolished.
Our plan is to install a shredding operation, which basically enables us to efficiently process material that we're currently sending elsewhere processing. It'll also allow us to keep pace with population growth in the future going forward. From a scrap metal perspective, the biggest result of population growth is an increase in end-to-end vehicles and discarded appliances.
Well, let me ask you this. Not to dominate this, but since we're talking, is, could you very briefly describe this process? And have you, I presume you talking, working with the planning board have determined that there's no adverse impact to the community around there? I'm thinking about noise, pollution, those types of things. I just would like to have you go on record to say that's...
That has been addressed, yes.
No questions about it. It's something that has been found acceptable by the planning board.
Let me ask a couple of questions related to that. That location is about a quarter mile just north of Turner's Chapel on Colton Road, correct?
I think that's correct.
That's the old General Shale facility? And you're acquiring not only the large open lot there, but in addition to the brick building that was their headquarters?
No, we're not buying that building.
Okay, so...
We're just buying the former plant site.
Okay, so out there where the open area is currently?
Where all the brick debris is, yes.
And are you relocating any other operational capability that you have at Lee Iron and Metal downtown Sanford?
No, this would be an additional facility. There's been some very persistent rumors going around that we were planning to move. That is not the case. This would be a new facility with new jobs.
Good. And then are you going to erect any other facilities, any other buildings on that property there?
Eventually, yes.
Okay. And has there been a land use hearing of any sort on that facility?
The property is owned heavily industrial, and we did apply for and receive a special use permit to build and operate scrap metal processing.
But to your knowledge, there won't be any other land use hearings required in the process? So essentially, when this board does approve or does, I guess we have to approve the bonding issuance? Okay, so when this board does approve it, that's the last administrative step you have to go through from the governmental agencies or not?
LGC approval tomorrow, and then the authority, the Lee County authority is meeting at noon today to give final approval to the documents and authorize the signing of the documents. Essentially, that's correct.
And it does require our board to vote to proceed, correct?
And you are approving in principle the issuance of the bonds for purposes of this project. That's right.
Okay, and I just provide this feedback back to my fellow board members that I would think that it appropriate, because this is a fairly significant facility that's outside the city limits of Sanford. It's in the county region. It's on a two-lane road that has a large, well, it's a rural setting. And there could be some impact, I would imagine, from trucks coming in and out, heavy trucks coming in and out of the facility, correct?
We are not planning to operate this as a retail facility. It would be commercial traffic only.
Right.
General Shale, when they were in full operation, was doing about 80 trucks a day. We will do less than 30.
Okay, I would think that it would be appropriate to get some feedback from some of the community out there off of Colton Road, North Colton Road and Post Office Road in that area just to make sure that we've heard from the citizens and that they don't get caught by surprise out there.
There was a public hearing.
They were in it.
Okay, so there was a public hearing.
Zoning's already been approved, okay?
Yeah, show them the letter.
Yes, we had to get a special use permit in addition to the heavy industrial zoning, and there was a public hearing at that forum.
There was.
Okay. Well, I thought I'd asked earlier if there was a public hearing requirement. I apologize. Then that's fine. If there's been a public hearing, you've had comments.
That's already happened.
And is someone going to provide us any sort of minutes or proceedings from that public hearing?
Show it to him, Scott. You got the letter from the planning.
They're available. The planning board is what they want before.
Okay, there...
While you're waiting, thank you for keeping Lee County in mind and trying to work it out correctly to help people.
Are there any other questions from the commissioners before we go into public hearing?
I'd just like to say to Scott, I appreciate, I've known the operation for years and years and years, and I appreciate what it done for Lee County in the past.
Yeah, I'd like to note that recycling is very beneficial for the community, whether it's scrap metal or any other type of recycling. Recycling conserves natural resources, it conserves energy, and it conserves landfill space.
Well, the good thing is you're not putting a squeeze on us, so good luck.
No county money.
That's right.
I did have one question. You said something about tax abatement. This will be when these improvements are made. I mean, I assume there's building permits and we get the value from that. So from a property tax standpoint, these are not exempt from property taxes, right?
Fully taxable.
Okay.
The single only tax benefit is that the holder of the debt, which in this case is BBNT, does not have to pay federal income tax on the interest it receives from Lee Iron and Metal on the debt.
Okay.
So there's no county impact. The North Carolina statute was very clear on this point, unlike in other states, that if you're going to use this kind of financing, you pay property taxes, so no question.
I declare now that we are in public hearing regarding the matter of the issuance of the economic recovery zone bonds to Lee County, Lee Iron and Metal Company. All those who wish to... All those who wish to speak in favor, would you please do so now? Scott, I assume you want to speak in favor of this?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Just for the record, so.
It's what I already had. Our plan is to use these bond proceeds, as I said, to build a shredding plant, to, to basically allow us to continue to grow in the future and provide effective recycling services for Lee County.
Is there anyone else who would wish to speak in favor? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against?
I would move that we close the public hearing, and I so move that it be approved.
Okay. A motion has been made to close the public hearing and to approve the issuance of the bonds. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please designate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion passes. Is that all we do on that one, John? I guess other than sign a bunch of papers later? Next item on the agenda, Item C, Discussion and Reference to New Animal Control Ordinance. And Dr. Diane Schaller, is she going to be presenting?
If I can make a few brief comments, then Dr. Schaller will come in?
Absolutely.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The Board of Health has approved recommendations from the subcommittee meetings, which start meeting in July of 2009 and went through October 2010, foreign amended animal control services ordinance. This is the first change in 13 years, so we thought it was long overdue, and the Board of Health felt that way. We are asking you, as the Board of Commissioners, to review this ordinance and consider scheduling a public hearing or hearings before final adoption. Budget impact for the ordinance, yes, that there is possibly a budget impact, in the sense that we are also recommending that the enforcement portion of the services be given to the Lee County Sheriff's Department, but you'll be hearing more about that throughout the budget portion this spring. We're not recommending anything today. I will say that we have open discussions, that is, myself on behalf of the Board of Health, with the county manager and with the Sheriff's Department on this particular matter. There are four persons here today who were working with the subcommittee, Dr. Schaller, Mr. Kenny Cole, Ms. Tamara Brogan was there, and also Commissioner Odom was on that subcommittee. Abby Lindauer, who is here representing Kara, and Kara assisted us in the rewrite of this ordinance. Heath King was the staff person assigned to this project. I tend to like to speak under two minutes. Ma'am, I'm done, and I'm gonna turn it over now to Dr. Diane Schaller. She'll explain a little bit more in detail to the commissioners what it is that the Board of Health wants to do with this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Surpass.
Good morning, thank you so much. And we prepared a very, I think it's eight slides, very brief slide. I'll try not to just read from there. And thank you again for your time, and I'll try to be, try to be brief. So in summary, like Mr. Surpass said, we had a subcommittee that was put together to, basically to review the current ordinances and to make some proposed changes. So at this November meeting, this past November, we did vote unanimously to accept the revisions and forward it on to you folks, and our action request is to accept the proposed amendments to consider it and hopefully accept it. So a little bit of background, back in 2007, there was a subcommittee that was formed to look at the ordinances, and they did some rewrites. The Board of Health in January of '08 did endorse that, and then it, we worked with a student, with a student of government, and basically what happened was, when they did the rewrites with the student, we, or they, it was a technicality in how some of the general statutes were presented in the document. You can reference them, you just can't incorporate in the document, so it wasn't done properly. So it was sent back to us saying, no, this is not how you can do it legally and logistically. So that's why it was sent back. And then it was kind of literally put on the back burner for a while. And then July of '09, another subcommittee was created. Once again, there was, I'm sure you, I know several people have gotten letters, emails, we all read, hopefully we all read the Stanford Herald newspapers, just outpriced from the public as to some of the concerns with animal control and our ordinances. And so a subcommittee was put together to look at our ordinances as, as they were. And then, like I said, this past November, we did adopt them and have asked you all to review them. So the subcommittee consisted of Mr. Doc Goldham, as Mr. Surpass already mentioned, Dr. Kelly Falk, myself, Mr. Kenny Cole, and Kim Godon, we had a citizen member, she is the current president of Carolina Animal Rastaman Adoption. They're a local 500(c)(3) corporation that is an animal advocate of the animals of Lee County. And then we also worked very closely with Carl Eismann, who is a supervisor, Mr. Kane, and then we also had other animal control officers that would come in, they were at our meetings, that we could ask questions to kind of logistically, how is it really, when you go out in the field, what are you seeing, what are your concerns, what is animal control, what are their concerns, what are their needs, that sort of thing, too. So what we were asked to do is basically review what's out there, what our ordinance is, and we literally took our ordinance word by word, line by line, went through everything. And then we were asked to provide suggested amendments based on current standards, current, you know, what's the gold standard, what's practice standards. So we met, what was this, 12 times for about 35 hours. It feels like you could add a zero to the end of that, very interesting 35 hours. We did use some reference materials. Professor Amy Law at UNC School of Government, she has a North Carolina guide animal control law placing out very nicely. We reviewed animal control ordinances from other counties. We basically didn't recreate the wheel. We looked at our bordering counties, literally got copies of their animal control ordinances, went by line by line, they look at this specific, what do they have for blank, okay? Right from this, right from that, and picked, you know, if you look at different counties trying to propose what we believe works for Lee County, understanding, you know, I don't live in downtown Raleigh, thank goodness. I live here in Lee County for a reason. I actually live out in the county. There's a reason why I brought, you know, bought my home with the acres, with my dogs who run on my acres, and why I'm not living in downtown Raleigh and don't want the constraints of downtown Raleigh. So we looked at what works for Lee County. We are, you know, for more of a rural versus urban, what would be appropriate for the citizens of Lee County. And like I said, it really didn't recreate that. We all just kind of took from other current approved, you know, ordinances from other counties and incorporate what we felt were best for Lee County. And then soliciting advice from other experts, other animal advocates, like I said, Kara, some larger animal advocate organizations. I myself spoke with, like, Dr. Lee Hunter, Dr. Marilyn Haskell, these are the state public health veterinarians, Department of Ag veterinarians, what works for the county. Spoke with some of the veterinarians at NC State, who have seen different counties, what are they doing to try to see what is the best practice standard, what is acceptable, what do they see the problems are. And then we drafted our proposed amendments. Some of the significant new provisions, some, like I said, we pared down the document quite a bit. For instance, if you look at the old document, under rabies control, lots of text, the new document just references the general statute, period, that's all that's in there. The old document, or the current document, excuse me, for instance, says that it is unlawful to have a inherently dangerous animal, like you can't have a tiger in your county. That's currently what are animal control, what are our ordinances, you cannot do it, but it said, but if you do, here's how you have to keep it. So we just pared it down to, you cannot have these such animals in there. So trying to make it more condensed, working with Attorney Dale Towber, too, you know, he reviewed it, making it a little bit easier for a slave persons to read, but enforceable, you know, make it an appropriate legal document. So standards for animal shelter and enclosure, so for instance, I'm not gonna read, I'll only reference it just a couple of times if I can find it, but as far as like enclosures, it does say, you know, if you choose to enclose, see if I can find it quickly, apparently I can't, you know, if you choose to use an animal shelter or animal enclosure, these are the requirements. And it doesn't say you have to, you don't have to put your dog in a cage outside, but if you do, put it into an enclosure, this is what it is to be, those enclosures specifically, as it states, are, you need a minimum of a 10 by 10, 10 by 10 pen, and then for any, up to 100 pounds and any additional dog, pound, it'd be a, so for instance, a 60-pound lab goes in a 10 by 10, you're five chihuahuas that are 10 pounds, 5 pounds apiece, whatever, can go in the 10 by 10. If you have two 110-pound Great Danes, then you have 210, 110 pounds, you have 220 pounds, you need the appropriate enclosure to, to house them. And then also, basic standards for a doghouse sort of thing, that they need room to go in, to turn around, come to lie down, just taking from what is considered a standard practice. Standards for tethering when voluntarily used, basically it says, you know, you don't have to tether your dog, but if you choose to do so, this is why we recommend you tether. The original ordinances, they were also amended at the last Board of Health meeting from public comment, some concerns about, we had type of collar, and then they wanted to add properly fitting, so they were amended, taking into account the animals. Service fees for impoundment euthanasia, there are currently fees for impoundment, but not currently fees for euthanasia. I hear it in my practice, animal will come in, for whatever reason, it is in the best interest, or the owner chooses in the best interest, the animal to be euthanized. Every veterinary practice, I'm going to assume, I haven't asked all the practices, but there are fees to euthanize, these are controlled drugs, they are controlled through the DEA, we have to track them, we have to log them, we have to pay for them. The veterinarian is the person that has to do the lethal injection, that has to be tracked, et cetera. So there are fees for that, of course, to cover business fees. Currently, there aren't fees on animal control, so I've heard numerous times, well, I'll just take them out there, they do it for free. However, you all do pay for the syringes, you pay the staff people to do the euthanasia, you do pay for the, the drug, we do have to track it, we do have to, I know how much my DEA license costs per year, so there are fees involved, so it's not a free service to the county, and are recommending that it not be a free service for those that have to euthanize their animal. We're talking to people that comes in and says, I want to euthanize, euthanize my dog. Special permit fee for owning 30 or more cats or dogs. The concerns are trying to, I know that it was going on in a long session with, with the state as far as trying to deal with what's called hoarding, but just concerns for owning a large number of, of dogs and cats. Owner at large animal may redeem only upon microchipping and or altering fee. I could, if I could take a moment to find that, it does say that it's the, when you, your animal gets out and they redeem it the first time, there is a fee, an animal needs to be microchipped. That's basically where you implant a microchip in the dog. This is something that the veterinary offices, animal control, Kara has a scanner that it identifies them, just a little microchip in their back, there's no tracking device, there's nothing that can track it on satellite, like some people are concerned about, it's just a little microchip and it can be scanned, and then you can identify who the owner is. It is upon the second time that the animal comes out that is, that we propose that it be altered. You know, as far as commenting on what are other counties doing, our neighboring surrounding counties, a majority of them are altering on the first strike, so to speak. It was our recommendation that anything can happen. I had my own, my dogs were pretty near, but my dogs get out, and ended up at animal control use, it's my annoyed neighbor calling me, but certainly anything can happen anytime. And it, we're concerned about, you know, in a county where animal overpopulation is a really big concern, and, you know, where you, you wouldn't want to go through the euthanasia rates that we do per month in this county, it's staggering, but trying to keep the intact females and the intact males from when they're out and about breeding and contributing to our animal control, our animal overpopulation problem. So it would be the second time that that happens, not the first time. The first time, it's a fee that is gonna cover the, all the paperwork, literally, that the animal control officers have to go through, and then the microchipping, and that microchipping would be at the owner's expense. The adoption requirement agreement to alter and microchip, there already currently is an adoption requirement agreement, that has been up for, gosh, I want to say five, six years that we have it? Myself and numerous other practices in town, it's a voluntary agreement where if you come in and you'd like to adopt a, we're talking, these are stray animals that were, or animal owner strangers have gone through their whole time, enter up for adoption, you come in, you adopt a pet, you pay X amount of dollars to the veterinarian, and it's an agreement where, for instance, we comprehensive exam, their first vaccines, rabies vaccines that are altered for, you know, for that fee, the addition is that to be microchipped also, and that is in the hopes that if an animal does get back out, we can then call the owner and say, hey, we have Fluffy, versus with our current animal overpopulation, being able to hold animals for 72 hours at the most sometimes because they are, and they are euthanized. So in attempt to try to return these dogs back to the, to their rightful owners versus having to euthanize them and then go to the landfill. Dogs must be on a leash if in a public area, example, parks, schools, retail stores, et cetera. That's concern from the public of, you know, at school and so and so, pools, I had children go through tramway, and I loved when my kids would come home and, what'd you do today? High school, great? What'd you do? Nothing? What's the favorite party date? Recession? What'd you do? We played with the dogs, the big black labs outside. Oh my gosh, so kind of concerning as far as a public health standpoint, concern for children. So when people are out and about, the, this is the, you know, our county parks, that my expectation, if I go to a county park, is that I can go out there with my kids, and we can walk trails, we can play the playground equipment, and I'm not gonna have a, you know, I'll, I'll pick the, I love pit bulls, you know, the, those with a bad reputation, the 80-pound pit bull run up and jump on my child, that if someone is there with their dog, and they're gonna be, I don't know how that dog want a leash. Some are concerned. We also talked about the new, the trail out to indoor furnace, you know, expectations, there'll be families out there riding their bikes, families out there walking their dogs, families out there walking, jogging, and hope, you know, assuming that someone's not gonna roll up in their car and let their dogs out to run, and that would be a nuisance for both the, the young children, I've got young children, so. And this is just a picture of the animal control law from the school government, Dr. the Amy Law, that we referenced quite a bit, as in addition to really mostly ordinances from, from other counties, so. That's all I have, thank you. Any specific questions, or shall I stay for questions of myself, or any other subcommittee members?
I'm sure some of the commissioners will have some questions.
I've got one on the committee, I guess. How many public hearings have you held already?
So the only public, the public was November at our Board of Health meeting. We had opened a public comment, and we had a couple people comment at that time. And the comments were, as far as the tethering concerns, it was brought up by a, a citizen that although they said they appreciated what we put in for tethering, it has been their experience where they had a dog where the collar had grown into its neck. So the collar would have fit our current updated ordinances, however, they asked that we added a properly fitting collar, which we did. The other concern came from a business in town, Tar Heel canine training, that may not be there after business, maybe, but something like that. Our ordinances, we had in there, really, the, the concern was not having any fighting rings, that sort of thing, which happens, has been a problem since I've been in this county my eight years, but the wording that we chose, because they do work with law enforcement and they do train dogs for, you know, go and grab the bad guy kind of thing, that our wording could have interfered with their business practice. So they had their attorney with them, represent them, and it was with Attorney Towber, kind of worked out with them right there at that meeting, proper verbiage that allowed for them to do their business, but not in a bureaucratic way, yet would keep, if animal control rolls up to a pit bull fighting ring, they can't say, hey, we're just training dogs for, because it's in our ordinances, we can train dogs.
I ask, because one thought that I have, and a concern as well, is that we may not be reaching the heart of, of the dog owners and cat owners or animal lovers. And has it been any consideration possibly... And has it been any consideration possibly doing public hearings at the fire department?
Mr. Reeves?
I think, Mr. Reeves, the, the approach was, the Board of Health looks at it, makes a recommendation of the commissioners, and then you direct us. And right before this meeting started, I spoke to Mr. Crumpton, and I said, if you ask us, for instance, to hold three or four, January, February, we can take it from there. But what we were really trying to do today is to say, our work with the ordinance is done, we're passing it off to you, as you review it. What do you want us to do? And public hearings certainly are in order, and we'll be glad to do as many as you all see fit.
I'd like to offer that, and I think where Commissioner Reeves may be coming from as well, that this is, this is perhaps one of the most contentious things that we'll ever do in the community, in terms of imposing new and more detailed restrictions on, on particularly dogs. It is, it's amazing to me, the number of dog owners we have in this county. I mean, it's, I would dare say, it's probably half the county, half the premises in the county own a dog, indoor, outdoor, or multiple dogs, and, and it's, for us to, to proceed by merely rubber stamping or approving this or, these ordinance changes, particularly as pertains to tethering and shelters for dogs, I think we're going to run into a major enforcement problem early on, especially because we've got two diverging schools of thought in the county. You've got the dog owners, who have been traditional dog owners, who think they do an admirable job of taking care of their pets, each of which has a different set of personal standards. And then you have the, the dog advocacy groups, and there are a number of those in the community as well, that would like to see very restrictive ordinances put in place, and, and perhaps that's where, where the, the spaying and neutering aspect came in from, too. You're going to have a major contention with this ordinance as worded, unless we have a public buy-in, where the, where the, where the masses are heard from, and I think perhaps maybe through fire stations or other mediums in the community, that we, we give this ample opportunity to air out, so that people have a chance to, to state their, their ideas and opinions, and what they're opposed and, and supportive of, and then, and then deliberately moving forward with implementing a change.
I think that was our understanding, too, is that we were to review it, put for, what we believe is best practice, take into consider Lee County, and no financial impact results is something we had to, had to do. Exactly, trying to make sure that, i- is it, does it make sense? Is it reasonable?
Right.
Yeah, having big push, like you said, from animal advocacy, where they would like us to, you know...
Every dog must be microchipped, one more to two dogs per house, and that kind of thing, right?
Exactly, exactly, and I've seen your hearing, things like that, going, wow, I've got three dogs, and three pets, and that stuff right there, well, I'd be over that limit already. So, what's reasonable? I mean, I work in a county where I work with hunters, I work with, you know, there are beagle dogs, and very responsible pet owners, you know, I live in the county, and, you know, a lot of it is tethering, if you choose to tether, meeting basic standards. And if you choose to enclose, because my dogs aren't enclosed when they're out, my dogs are on the underground fence. So, you know, if you choose to have, some of the concern, the last meeting, too, was the new dog at large, which, you know, we tried to make sure people understood that, which is, it's not, you know, live in the county, the concern was, well, my dog's on my neighbor's property, so we changed some wording there with the help of Mr. Talbert, you know, with the consent of the property owner. So, those of us who do live in the county, I really don't care if my neighbor's dogs come over my property, I mean, I'm situated, there's acres all behind myself, Silers, Mr. Brown, Dr. Reese, I mean, if their dogs are, it's, it's really not that a problem, it's trying to protect the individual who says, why does this dog keep coming on property? This dog keeps coming over property, doing this, bothering my children. Currently, we have, you know, this in your ordinance, go and say, look, you know, you can't have your dog go over there teasing those children, you know, this disturbing the neighbors, so. Really tried to, we believe we've been very, you know, tried to be as judicious as possible and reasonable for what works for, you know, I live in the county, and that's one of the reasons why, when I moved here from out of state, I looked at Raleigh, I looked at Cary, ooh, I can't move them farther, farther away. So, I'm here in Lee County by choice because of, you know, my animals, my family, my children, what, you know, what's, what's ethically reasonable. So, our understanding was there would be
Yes, ma'am.
public hearings, so people can come, you know, what are their concerns from? You know, the, like you said, the animal rights, I'm an animal advocate, animal rights, animal rights, which would be way on this side, to someone that, you know, maybe, according to these people, don't even practice, you know, any standards that are appropriate, so.
John, is this proposed ordinance online electronically, so anybody who has the opportunity can go in and look at it?
It's now online. My suggestion is that we do three public information meetings, do one up in Deep River, do one in Broadway, maybe one down in Greenwood, Lemon Springs area, and then we'll do the last one here, at one of our meetings, that's what we did in Scotland County, and it seemed to work pretty well. And then solicit the help of the paper, getting what major changes are out into the paper, and take our time in passing this thing. So, that's why we didn't ask for an action item on this today. I think it's, you know, anytime you talk about someone's animals, it's a, it becomes an emotional issue, and I think we need to be able to deal with those, and over time, I think if you, you put that long process in place, you're showing, you're not trying to just throw something in here, and, you know, it's going to be well thought out, so.
What will be the process for making amendments? Because I thought Dr. Settle had some excellent points in her presentation, as well. I know, I babysit my son's rottweiler, and every once in a while, when he discovers the road, the door isn't quite shut, knows how to nose it open, and he gets out and runs around, he's a big lap dog, but people would seem to be scared. I don't want to have him be picked up for the first time, and whatever, so.
I think the board needs to decide how they're going to make the amendments. My suggestion is that we make, we, we start making a list of proposed amendments, and as we go through the hearings, we'll, we'll add to that list, and then we'll come back and discuss it as a board, and put our final draft together, and, and then come for a vote, but I would be concerned as well, you know, if I was, had championship dogs, and next thing I know, I've got a spayed dog, and, you know, yeah, that, it does happen. Electrical fences, the power goes out, and dogs can run. It's, it's amazing how they have that sense, that the coast is clear, and they can take off. I have two that do it.
I know that, that ought to be one of the first amendments, we address and get that out of the way. That's something we can do immediately, and then the others can come in at a time of the matter. Let me ask one more curiosity question, if you will.
Yes, sir.
You know, sometime adults are as bad as children. By the moment, you tell them they can't have something, it's the one thing they want.
Correct.
I can assure you, the only tiger I would want in my house or yard is Tiger Woods. But I will tell you that we'll eventually have someone who will come up and say, I want to have a big cat. And my question is, did you look at Chatham County? I know some time ago, they had a, I guess, a big cat.
Rescue? Yeah, we have, I think, it's not our town, the aloha is not our town, correct? Aloha is...
Something here that...
Yeah, they, they follow under different, with the, the...
No, I know they do, but what I'm asking is, if, the fencing probably doesn't change very much, or the requirement for fencing, but
For, for the...
if a person wanted to own one, for their own...
Currently, as it is in Lee County, it's, you're not able to do that.
Agreed, and that's what they're going to ask for, if it, not, you may, not that they know it's not, it's something they can have, that's what they'll come and ask for. So, my question is, if you look at the preparation they've made, and their ordinance to house a big cat, did you look at that?
I did not talk with the, with any of the veterinarians of the state to try to figure out what the gauge requirements, what's going to be as far as cement bottom, inch range cage, that sort of thing. We, we did, of course, do the research and get what's recommended for the dangerous dog, for cage requirements, but I knew that, you know, what's recommended by, for, the, because I used to do very work for some of the wolf sanctuaries, what's their requirements, they did have large cats there, and they were, it was managed by the state, what their cage requirements were, but we did not research
Okay.
if you have one here, mainly because it's something that has not been legal here, and, yeah, I guess there's always a possibility, somebody's in the town and wants to own a crocodile in their backyard, and I guess that's...
Or somebody has one here, illegal. I'd like to know what it stands for.
Yeah, currently, if, if they would own one illegally, then it would fall under, in the current ordinances or the new ordinances, it's really not that different than it currently is.
All right, thank you.
So, absolutely.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to say, I'm familiar with the time that this little subcommittee put into this revision, and I want to personally thank them for their time and effort, and I think this board has several things we've got to look at. One, we need to let the public look at this, give them time to discuss it, and come back to us with, you know, any recommendations they have. Several things we're talking about, you know, you keep hearing the word fees come up, this board needs to look at how those fees need to be used, once they come into the county. And the thing I heard the most about, when I was working with this committee, was enforcement of the existing ordinance. Most people say, well, we want to see some bite in the ordinance. I kept hearing from the folks that were out there in the field, you know, they would write someone a ticket, and they'd tear it up and throw it on the ground in front of them, and, you know, that kind of makes a bad day for you, if you're out there trying to do your job. But we have a lot of things we need to look at, and, you know, I want to stick the time and, and do this thing right.
Okay. Yes.
I'd like to have a couple of comments. I'm, I'm not looking for necessarily a dialogue here, but just some sensitivity points that, as we go through this process, I hope will come out. But first of all, I'd like to also congratulate you for getting it this far, and Mr. Oldham and I seem to have the same checkoff list, so I won't go through those. I do believe enforcement's very important, and, and that's going to make a big difference here. Public hearings, absolutely. It occurs to me that the sort of thrust of all of this is to protect citizens from animals, and to protect animals from citizens, both. And so, I, I think that if we can get this in right balance, and I do thank you and your efforts to look at best practices around, so that we're not having to recreate the wheel, some of the things that I hope that this will avoid, and I assume it will, is that the horrendous puppy mill situation that occurred here a few years ago will never happen again. And so, I believe I read in this that if proper enforcement is applied, that that cannot be allowed to happen again, but, you know, what I'm speaking of, and, and, and it was, it was a national observation of something going on right here in Lee County, that should not have happened, in my opinion. So, cruelty to animals is something that, on this board, I, I'm an advocate for protecting animals as well as people, and I want you to know that. Are we in sync with the city's ordinances? Is that a factor at all, or do these sort of coexist and come together happily? And I'm not asking for an answer at the moment, I've also mentioned that to the county health director, but obviously, we want to mesh gears well with the city, I know they have ordinances, and, and I think that we may be setting the state of the art now with the good work that's been done here. And so, this is going to really be exciting, and interesting, and challenging, and a good thing for Lee County to, to rise to the occasion, once we have the hearings and get this passed. I think we're, we're really moving forward in a, in a correct way. Obviously, the budget implications of this are going to be very significant, and I hope that it's going to be manageable, but I don't know then till we look at the whole budget situation, but I hope that, personally, I hope it's going to be something that is such a priority and so important, that we can see as a board our way clear, to say, this is good, and we will do this, even if it has to be done in phases, but that we will get on with improving these ordinances for the protection of people and animals. And, and that's all. I just wanted to sort of tell you that we're with you, and we have a lot of friends out there, both, of both camps. I have not heard anything that has been adverse, like camps up in arms, but I really do believe, what my fellow commissioners have said, that there's nothing that'll take the place of giving the public a real chance to air this out, and, and, and seek them, ask them to come in and talk, you know, speak now, or, or hold your peace, once we get into that process, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Finch.
John, is it possible for, when folks go online to view it, can they download a copy of it in a PDF file?
Yes.
They can, because I have one.
Okay, that would be very helpful, because I'm somebody that I always have to print something to make notes and whatever. So, I guess what we're looking to do here is, first of all, to make the public aware that this is being considered, and so people need to be able to review it and look at it, and then schedule a series of hearings. I hope that that won't happen until after the first of the year, because people are a little...
We talked January and February.
And to hold them at various places within the county.
I think that's the consensus of the board, and...
And to let the Sanford Herald help inform the public on what's going on here, right?
Okay, yes, ma'am.
I was wondering if I've asked that you consider utilizing the local fire departments? We'll hit everybody in the rule section.
It's a good idea. I like that. Okay, so I guess there is no action required here? Well, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And thanks for the presenters who presented at the beginning, share us, with us your comments. Okay, next item on the agenda is Item D, Consider Contract with Tax Scribe for Electronic Business Listing Program. Dwayne Brinson.
Good morning, Mrs. Chair, members of the board. The tax office, we really build a culture of being as customer-friendly as possible. I represent some, in the customer service division a lot, and we take in the mentality of something similar to what Andy's does, Andy's Cheesesteaks. When you walk in the door to Andy's, hello, welcome to Andy's, and that, we haven't gone to that extent yet, but we do try to bring those neutral people over to the positive side, and give them a positive experience in the tax office. And the staff in the tax office really sets us out statewide, sets us apart. What you have before you is a contract to consider a program called Tax Scribe, which is an online electronic business listing program, provided through one of our business auditing firms. What it is, we currently accept paper copies of business listings, so if you own a business, we'll send you out a listing abstract, they'll return that, listing the equipment, any, any business equipment they have, and then we'll value it accordingly. While that option will still exist if we do Tax Scribe, there's also an option to do it electronically. A lot of counties have gone to the electronic version, and Durham County stands out as, as the first one to mind, but with Tax Scribe, they also have another option to fill out the business listing electronically. I guess first and foremost, it is, what we're, we're proposing is that the, the free version to the county, so it won't, won't cost the county anything at all to do this, while it'll free up staff time, and it'll make things much easier for the taxpayer, especially CPAs handling a lot of business listings. They can, there's an option for the taxpayer to do it free. There, there's also three other options, as you see in your packet, depending on the amount of information they want to store annually, the fee could range from fourteen ninety-five to twenty-nine ninety-five per listing, and that is something that the taxpayer chooses. So, there's a free option, and there are also different paying versions, depending on what information they want to store, and how many business listings they need to list for. When you do electronic listings, there's also an option to extend the listing period to June first. Our current extension allows businesses to do this by March fifteenth, if they request that extension in January. So, we send out listing forms, they send us a request for extension back, and they can get that extension up to March fifteenth, before they have to turn back in the listing form. Electronic listing does allow it to June first. What we're proposing in the resolution is to continue with a March fifteenth deadline, we're not recommending going to June first. April first, I have to have the tax base estimate in, and extending it beyond April first would make it very challenging to estimate the tax base. I have a few screenshots here of the Tax Drive program, it gives a lot of information on it, and also, you'll see in your packet, a contract, which will more or less serve as an addendum to our existing contract with Tax Management Associates. Mr. Hoyle has already reviewed the contract, has agreed that it looks okay, didn't see any legal problems in there. And I guess with that, I'll entertain any questions the board may have.
I have a question about your software. Obviously, when you see...
Obviously, when you see the word "free," you immediately get suspicious. And I notice here that it says "free service provided to the county." Do we get county functionality out of that software that is on the aggregate level for management of the tax base and utility functions that would improve and enhance the performance of your office?
Right, we would. It would allow us, with the free version, it'll free up staff time. We will, I think it's staff now that have a, they spend a lot of time just trying to dissect what the businesses list, because anytime it's in writing, the spaces are sometimes very small, depending on the amount of equipment. And if they do this online, then it's very legible, it can expand. So yeah, it will definitely free up staff time, and we'll get an extreme amount of usability out of it.
Another thing that I noted in the narrative on your contract, it discusses moving data out to a website. And I get a little suspicious now and then when I see information's going to be stored at an external site. What value does Tax Management Associates Inc. get out of this? Do they get information they would not normally have about the businesses in Lee County? And are they allowed to resell or reuse that data that's posted out there?
No, sir. They are our business auditing firm, so they have access to all of our business files as it stands now. And with the free version, if the taxpayer chooses to fill out the forms free, then what they will do is go to this website, fill out the form, type in all the information, whatever is needed. They'll print that out, and they could either, well, they could scan and email it to us, or they could send it in as they normally would, as if they were writing it all out.
And has Kyle looked over this contract and given it his blessing from an information system standpoint?
I have not shown it to Kyle.
I would recommend that your IT director take a look at this thing and make sure that he's gone through it line by line to make sure there's no hiccups there. It would be compatible with our policies for information services here in the county.
Absolutely, can do that.
And I had a question also. It looks like you're only deliverable if we do the free as a PDF file. And so I assume then that the data will still be have to hard keyed into the system by people in your office.
Right, that is correct.
But you have an option with these other paid-for fees, and so I guess I'm thinking that it, I'd like to see a cost-benefit analysis if we can get one of those other services where either in a CSV or an Excel format, if it can pump right into our property tax statement system and bypass the hard keying in by your staff. I'd like to see a cost-benefit analysis of that.
And when we spoke with TMA, they did say that if we do one of the advanced options, they will customize it to whatever we need. So a lot of counties throughout the state have different tax software versions, and, you know, all the information's not the same, all the filters are not the same. So they said they will work with us to customize it to what we need, to completely bypass any data entry.
Do you have questions?
Is there some time deadline? Is there some advantage? I'm hearing good things that are prudent thinking for us to approve this, and I'm wondering if you are sort of putting this out for consideration for us to approve and you to implement in due course, or were you trying to get this up and running even with a sort of beta process before February? Or what is your, what's your timing?
The listing process begins in January. So if we were going to do it this year, then we would need it approved prior to then, because what we're going to do is also send out an insert in the abstracts that businesses get. So they will know that they can go to this website, make it a lot easier on themselves to type it in or do a paying option and store data. But if we were going to do that, we would need to send it out with the business listing abstracts before the listing period.
Another question, are there other counties doing this? Good examples of this practice already operational counties near us? And has it been pretty trouble-free, from what you know?
Yeah, I know Durham County does it. They have for years. And they actually have extended their deadline to June 1st for listings. I got a list from TMA of the counties that have approved this program already or are considering it. And four, we just got this contract from Tax Management a few weeks ago. Four have already approved it. The Board of Commissioners and the counties have already approved it. Sixteen are on the agenda for today. So it is, it is a movement toward that process, and it does seem to be very popular. Mary Yao and I have seen a demo on the program, about an hour long, I think mine was. So it is very impressive, you can customize it. We could even include a link to our live chat. So if businesses are on this website and just can't figure it out, they could chat with the listing staff. So there are a lot of options out there for customizing and...
You said earlier, though, the fallback is that in the event, they could go manual, as we do it now, in the event that the software didn't work for a business, they could still do it the old-fashioned way.
Absolutely. There's no requirement to do it electronically, it just gives them another option, which should be a lot easier for them.
Brinson, let me ask a question. What is, just sort of a quick synopsis of what's the process now? And what is this going to do for us with the new process?
Well, the current process, we get stacks and stacks of listing forms. So once we send out listing forms to businesses, we get those returned in. Mary and her staff enter that information into the program. With this, if we go with the free version, and, well, you know, I guess it doesn't matter what the taxpayer chooses, but we would get that either in an email format, they could scan and email it to us, and then we could enter them, or they could mail it back into us as they would any other listing form. And then we would have to enter the data, but it would be much more legible.
So they can email it in today?
Well, they could, but it comes out in a much more friendly format if you do it through this program. They could still scan and email the current listing form to us, but it's not really set up for that.
It's not interactive in the way...
Sounds like either way, either option they take, you still have to re-enter. Is that right?
With the free versions, we'd have to re-enter.
Is that correct, Mary, we still have to re-enter?
We will have to enter all of the data, that will not change. This is more a customer service issue. It makes it easier for the customer, for the taxpayer. Our CPAs have been warning us to have this for a while, and they will like it, because they will be able to, you know, do their filings online. We have CPAs that file literally for a hundred or more accounts. And franchises such as, for instance, a drugstore chain, they can use Tax Scribe and file for all of their locations. They can choose the option to retain their data, so it's there the next year, so they don't have to re-key everything, they just can make changes. And then, as Dwayne said, if the taxpayer wants to use the free version, they can enter their data, print their form, and send it back into us as usual. Or they can choose the pay option and have it sent to us electronically, where we would go in, and we have the option to either get hard copies of those returns from TMA, or we can go into the system and download them ourselves. So we're going to be able to see what's coming in as people are listing. We're not going to have to wait, if they file electronically, we don't have to wait for the postal service to get it to us. Or there's always, you know, that situation where someone says they sent their return in and we didn't receive it. It's lost in the mail. So it does give more options to the taxpayer. But with our current software, listing software and billing software that we bill off of, does not have the option for us to import that data. And that's not, you know, the issue with tax, that's an issue with our software. We do not have that capability at this time.
So that would give you the capability with the free part?
No, we will not have the capability to import the data directly into our billing system, because our billing system does not do that.
Even with the paid services of a CSV format or an Excel file, our systems wouldn't accept data in that format?
The current software that we use, Munis, we cannot import that data directly into the return, into the billing system.
Let me ask you this. This question about, earlier I had asked about getting some utility functions that benefit the county. What I'm hearing now is maybe a little different than what I thought before. You're saying that the only advantage that really accrues to us is that we would get things in a more speedy fashion, in a more legible fashion, that we're not really getting any utility function back to the tax office that allows us to either better manage or more effectively manage the data that we have to manage that ends up being billed. Is that correct?
Well, I think, just in your comment of the legibility thing, I mean, there's, it's a lot cleaner to key a listing that has crisp data in it than it's got handwritten data, per se. There's less errors, hopefully, in what taxpayers part, especially if they choose to retain their data. But as far as, you know, it's a new program, so it's hard for me to answer your question as to how much time it's going to save us in the office until we've...
But it's not going to replace another system that you're using now, and it's not going to...
It's not going to replace our billing system.
It's not going to reduce your workload in the sense that it's going to streamline the process of getting things in, other than just simplifies, or it gives another medium for passing that information back into the, into the office.
Right, it gives the taxpayer another option to make it, you know, easier for them to file with us.
And have you shown this to any businesses that have suggested or encouraged you to use this? Because this is all for commercial, right? This is, there's no personal property.
Right, it is more business. But our CPAs have been asking us about it for years. When are you going to have electronic filing? Because they can do it in some of the other counties, I think Wake County, Durham County, some of your other counties already do have it.
And Mrs. Chair, I just noticed we have Lynn Kudrow from TMA here. If you have questions about the paying options, she may be more familiar with.
Is she very familiar with our native systems and our software capabilities? Or, I think that's more or less our concern.
Why don't you come on up?
And I understand that we have the option of downloading the first, the previous year's data there for the benefit of the filers, is that correct? Did I see that in the contract?
They would enter the first year information, right?
Would you?
The taxpayer would enter the first year information.
Correct. For taxpayer, I would have, the only thing available to the taxpayer, excuse me, my name's Glenn Kudrow. I'm with Tax Management Associates. I finished up with another county, and I knew Dwayne was having a meeting, so I rushed over here, and I saw him on the monitor outside, so I came on in. Repeat your question, and so I will get a good answer.
I thought I saw in here that the county had the option to send you a file of the previous year's data, which would automatically populate that for our business filers, and then they would key in the current years. Did I read that wrong in here somewhere?
Partially. The first year, we would give us what we call header information, name and address only. And that's what the taxpayer or tax preparer would see when they select the business in your county or this county in question. For all 100 counties, we would get all counties that come on board, we would have that header information available for the tax preparer, mainly CPAs that do commercial entities. They would bring it up, sit in and pre-populate just that information. Then they, in turn, the tax preparer, whether it's an individual or corporate entity or CPA, would then populate the schedules within the first year.
Okay, so one of the services that the businesses could pay for is if they're using QuickBooks or something, which lets them extract all of their depreciation schedules and their listings. That would feed into your system from their part, which would save them time, is that correct?
We do, we do accept depreciation schedule uploads, yes ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, brief question. This was developed after Durham County, Dwayne and Mary mentioned Durham County. TMA or Tax Management Associates developed that software in House 4 Durham County, and this is a product going forward to all 100 counties. Wake County is the only other county that has this system, they've had it for 10 years, and they're the original, they got the law passed to accept a resolution for that, and thus that's why a resolution is needed for each county thereafter. I'll try to entertain any question you may have, since I did walk in and we were late.
Where were you this morning? Just curious, what other county was looking at?
I hear you mentioned something about money or payment or something a few minutes ago.
There's nothing we have to pay for. There is an option to do it free, which again, does not allow us to streamline any processes or anything like that, but it does free up time for staff in the respect that the information is much more legible. And there's also an option for the taxpayer to do it free, depending on the number of listings they have to list for, and if they want to store information on a continual basis.
You're talking about the individual taxpayer?
Right.
Industry, business, they have to, they pay the fee to do it themselves.
Correct.
In other words, Tax Management Associates sole proprietor, one location, one other. They have the option to do it free if they so choose, but they have, if they want to save their information submitted, of course, they have to go with the fee option on that. But if they just want to fill it in, print it, sign it, send it in like a normal listing form, they can do that.
Even if it's one, one business can do it free. But if it's more than one business and it goes up to $14.95, there's a staggered scheduling there with one business, if you're listing, if it's one business.
Single owner, in other words, CPA's not involved. The difference between the fee for a sole proprietorship and a CPA is that by law, a CPA cannot sign the abstract, the owner has to. So with this electronic listing filing, the CPA has what we call share the file with the owner, and the owner, in turn, electronically signs his or her email address to it and forwards it back to the CPA, and thus, then he or she can submit it at that time. That's the big difference between the two, other than uploads.
Any other questions?
This is electronically encrypted, just so you're looking at security reasons for the tax preparer's information, being credit card information, or even your information. It's all encrypted, and it's dual-house, in Charlotte, North Carolina, corporate office, as well as downtown Charlotte, in a bunker situation, just like the banks store their information in what we call server farms. So we do have redundancy, so it's all protected information. Just like if you want to go online with a, to buy stuff online, and you fill up your cart full of information. We have the same certificates that they do. Sounds like what combat service should have put.
That's exactly what it is.
It's a choice, it's just another choice of taxpayer, door and green, paperless, etc.
A lot of people can type a lot faster than they can write, and it saves the businesses a lot of time. It's going to be this for some people.
Well, it's, again, this is just for, just for commercial, not for residential.
It's for business listings.
Business listings, right.
Will it be coming for individuals in the not-too-distant future?
That has not even been entertained whatsoever. And in any 39 states, you might say that a business, personal property, has not been entertained.
They just don't want to put that information.
That's right.
The listing form is a check balance, as it goes through, as a CPA or even an individual fills out the form, it's a checking balance, you can't get to the next file until that's correct. But I mean, we do the adding for them, so Dwayne and company will not get a file that doesn't add up. It has already been added, the additions are all there, it's been checked out. When they get it, it's a clean form, the addition's there, they just got to, if they do the free form, key what they see.
Okay.
Unless there's some opposition, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve this.
Approve the contract, the free version to the county, or...
As presented here to us.
I would like to offer perhaps a slightly amended version of that. I would like to endorse it, because I think we see, we sense a little urgency in trying to get this done so we can move forward with county business. I would like to have it under the condition that it's been reviewed and approved by the county IT manager, that if he, he doesn't see any reason or any reason not to move forward, that we go ahead and allow him to do that.
I accept that.
Chairman Hayes, are you comfortable with that?
Yes, yes. Actually, I have a policy that requires that.
Agreed.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the contract upon condition that it's been reviewed by our IT department to make sure that there's no conflicts there, and I guess no conflicts with county policy. Is that the motion as it stands? Although, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a little bit of concern, whether we're gaining that much help for our department. It sounds to me more like we need some better software in our department itself, where taxpayers can go directly. I have a little problem with involving another company, you know, since it's all taxpayer-paid for anyway, we should have somebody to taxpayer that can come to us directly. I think we need to go and watch the research.
Can I assist in that answer?
Sure.
We're aware that the current software company that not only this county has, but about 12 or 13 others, we have this issue with them, and we're, we're working directly with Tyler and Company to resolve that issue. On the BNC side, we're billing the collection side of the fence.
And the, the tax software is tied to our financial software, so, you know, I've, I've made the statements before to our folks, why don't we take a look at something else? And I get a look of horror on my, you know, from the people I'm speaking with, because of the, you know, what's involved with Munis and what they've done, and then what would be involved with a conversion to a different software, so, you know, I, maybe we let them, you know, work with Munis and see if they can work it out, and if they can't, I think we should be looking for something different anyway in the future.
I think this is mostly a customer service, something that's for the benefit of the client.
Right.
Quite frankly, it doesn't stop them from looking for better things, but this one seems to be one we might be able to afford. That's for better than that.
Thank you so much.
There's a motion on the floor to approve, conditional upon the approval of the IT director. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, motion passes. And, next item on the agenda is item E, discussion and consideration of 2013 revaluation project. And Mr. Princeton, you have the podium again.
Thank you. You have a second, Jim?
Okay. Okay, now I'm going to present information relating to current market conditions and the possibility of a 2013 revaluation. I included in your packet two resolutions. The first on page 100 of your packet, that shows that Lee County had adopted a four-year schedule of revaluation, which means that a countywide rebound would be conducted every four years, beginning in, I think it was 2003, then it was 2007, which was our last rebound. The next resolution was in March 2009, where the board adopted a resolution delaying the scheduled 2011 revaluation related to 2013. And that's the item that we're going to discuss today. Just a quick outline. We're going to discuss the state law as it pertains to countywide revaluations, important computations and definitions, just to make sure everybody's on the same page, and everybody knows what I'm talking about. Recap of 2007 revaluation, discussion of the current economy, we'll show you a lot of descriptive statistics and what they mean, and how they're impacting Lee County. Options, which is a 2013 rebound versus a 2015 rebound, and then we'll have an opportunity later for questions. So the state law, it mandates that North Carolina counties conduct a revaluation at least one, once every eight years. A lot of counties are on a four-year schedule, some are on a six-year schedule. It's probably half are on eight-year, and the other half have adopted a more frequent schedule. North Carolina general statute 105-287 prohibits the tax office from adjusting for current market conditions in a non-revaluation year, which means that January 1st, 2007, was our last rebound. We can adjust for current market conditions, whether they be up or down, in 2008, 2009, 2010, until our next rebound.
Can I ask a question? So in other words, if I had a house that's assessed at $400,000, and Charlie buys it for $200,000, he's going to pay the taxes on the $400,000 until the next rebound?
That's right, yes ma'am. And the reason for that is because you're looking at two different appraisal dates. Our appraisal date is the date of revaluation, which is January 1, 2007. If he buys it today, that's not comparing apples to apples, because of different market conditions. Now, I like to use the example, when I was in Anzo County in the early 2000s, mid 2000s, we were doing a revaluation. Beachfront properties were appreciating at 9% a month. We couldn't go out there and adjust for those market conditions, because it wasn't a revaluation. And now that the market may be down, and the same holds true, we can't adjust until we do a revaluation. So important computations and definitions. You'll hear me address a sales assessment ratio quite often. We do the sales assessment ratio quarterly, as required by the Department of Revenue. The Department of Revenue will send us a random sample of sales that have occurred in Lee County in that quarter. We compare the sale value with the assessed value. So a ratio less than one, or 100%, means that the tax assessment is lower than market value. An assessment greater than 100% means that market values are lower than tax assessments.
Well, the sales ratio, that just takes into consideration the sales price, has nothing to do with square footage or anything.
It's, it's the sales price of that property compared to tax assessment. And if it's lower than one, it just means that the tax assessment is a fraction of the market value of the sales price.
These are normal sales, not distressed sales, not short sales.
Yes ma'am, they have to be market arms-length transactions, so they have to be qualified sales, no foreclosures, sales between related parties, anything like that, we can't consider.
Okay.
Measures of central tendency, the mean is the average ratio, the median is when the data are arrayed from ascending to descending, or vice versa, it is the middle number. So it, it helps with those outliers, it's not as affected by outliers, it's the most used measure of central tendency in assessment. And then you have the mode, which is the most frequently occurring ratio. The price-related differential, it measures regressivity and progressivity of the tax burden. And I'll remind you of these numbers when we actually import Lee County data, and I'll show you what it is.
Explain a little bit, lay the terms of what that differential is.
The price-related differential is the weighted mean divided by the mean, and if it comes out to .98, that means that high-value parcels are over-appraised, which means that it's a progressive tax. If it is greater than 1.03, it means that high-value parcels are under-appraised, which means regressivity in tax. And I'll remind you of that as we go over the data. Coefficient of dispersion, it measures the spread of the data. When you're doing your revaluation, you want it to be at market value, at 100% of market value, but you also want the data to be typed. You don't want it to be spread all over the place. Okay, some different classes of property, and how the measures of central tendency, the generally accepted numbers, I guess you would say, single-family residential, you have right here. Generally, the sales ratio, so the assessment ratio, you're looking at 90% to 110%. That's what's considered normal. If you're anywhere in that range, it's, it's pretty normal. The coefficient of dispersion, how tight the data are, 5% to 10% on newer homes, of course, you can get on the list there. And the price-related differential is uniform across all types of property. So it's .98 to 1.03, which indicates normal market conditions. Recap of the 2007 revaluation. Whenever you do a reevaluation, it takes approximately two years, maybe 18 months, depending on the staff you have, and what all's involved in the rebound. In 2007, they did a full relist and remeasure, right? So they visited every property, they hired a lot of temporary appraisers, had a consultant, and had tax office staff, visited every property, put a tape on every property, made sure that the property record card was accurate. That's one of the fundamental parts of a rebound, is making sure the data we have are accurate as possible, because that's what we're producing the values on. And again, referencing 105-287, again, the values can't change until the next revaluation is effective. Generally, we use sales for a year or two prior to the rebound, so in 2007, we used 2005 and 2006 sales. Whenever we do our next rebound, we'll look at a year or two prior to that, because those are most indicative of current market conditions. Historical sales assessment ratio. So this goes back to 1995, you can see how the sales ratio kind of gets lower over time, and that's, that's good. That means that properties are appreciating, and as, as it gets lower, it indicates that you might need to do a revaluation. So beginning in 1995, you can see that we were at 100%. And then click one more time, and it's easy to see when the three revaluations are, because the revaluations are the point in time when tax values reflect market value. So January 1, 2007, that was market value. January 2, 2007, markets could have changed, you can't predict that. Our appraisal date is January 1, 2007. And you can see in 2002, the year right before, we did the 2003 rebound, the sales assessment ratio was at 75%, which means that tax assessments were 75% of what things were selling for on the open market. Then 2003, it jumped up to 100%, did the rebound, and I'll narrow this down to our more recent history. 2007, you can see we went back up to 100% of market value, which was our rebound. Now, in recent years, it's dropped to 93.94%, 95.5%, and through the first three quarters of 2010, it's at 94.90%. So you can see, right here, 2008, 2009, it's an upward slope, which means property values were declining, it's an inverse relationship. So during that year, property values were declining, but tax assessments still were lower than what current market values were. And you can see in 2009, 2010, property values appear based on the cells that we have, qualified cells that we have. Property values appear to be going up again. Okay, so, we're going to pull in the Lee County data now, see how that data compares with our measures of central tendency. So this is a snapshot of all the qualified sales, 2009, in Lee County, residential, commercial, vacant land, everything. Our median assessment ratio is 95.13%, which means on average, we're about 5% lower than what things are selling for on the open market. Our average ratio's 93%. COD is 14.30%, which is a little above normal, what kind of borderline, I guess. And our price-related differential, if you remember that range, .98 to 103, we're within that range there, so that's fine. So improved sales, this takes out vacant land, it's only properties that have a structure or improvement on them. You can see the median is slightly higher, 96.24%, and the COD, 10%, price-related differential, 102%. So those numbers are very good. They're a little, it indicates tax assessments are a little below current market values, but it's still very good. Okay, now, qualified vacant land sales. Median ratio is 75%, which means that our tax assessments are 25% below what vacant land is selling for on the open market. Our weighted mean ratio is 55.37%. Our standard deviation, I mean, you can look at all these numbers, and they, you can tell it's not equitable. Just pointing out one, the price-related differential. Remember our range, .98 indicates it's progressive. Anything above 1.03 indicates it's regressive. This is at 1.37.
I want to ask you a question about the vacant land.
Sure.
Is that timber land primarily?
It's any, any vacant land that sells.
Primarily timber land is listed.
Mm-hmm. That would be a roll-up of residential...
We don't include the timber into the price of the land sales, it's just raw land.
You don't, you don't include the timber, but it includes the land.
Right, I understand that.
Okay.
But I know there's a space, you can break if you got...
Especially used land. That's right, that's right. And that's just what you're taxed on.
Right.
We keep, we keep track, any parcel is in land use, which is the program he's referencing. There is a deferment on taxes.
Right.
And even though they are taxed on a much less portion of the market value, we do keep track of the market value of those parcels.
Does that would have to bear it on this number, or not?
No, no, we, we compare assessed value with what they're selling for.
Okay.
Right. That's just for calculating the tax bill, which, which referencing that. So the price-related differential, 1.37, which means that it's the higher-valued parcels, the higher-valued vacant land parcels are severely under-appraised in current market conditions. It may not have been in 2007, when we did a revaluation, but as, in using 2009 data, it's the higher-valued parcels are under-appraised. Commercial sales, much of the same. Our median ratio is a little over 69%, which means that the commercial properties are about 30% lower than what they are selling for. Our COD is at 30%, which means not only are the data, you know, at 70%, but it's also very, very spread out. It's not tightly compacted, it's, it's pretty spread out. And again, going to the price-related differential, it's 1.12, which means that it is a regressive tax, it's above 1.03. Residential sales, they look pretty good. The median ratio's at 95.60%. The COD is in line, it's at about 13.39%, and the PRD is well within the range at 1.01. So residential properties, it looks like our models from 2007 are still predicting what the 2009 properties would sell for. All right, it's like a plate of spaghetti.
Spaghetti.
What it is, it shows the quantity of sales from 2006 to 2010, and let me, I'll do this, just to make it a little easier to read. I compared 2006 to 2009, because that's the last full year of sales that we had. So look at the quantity of sales, and if you remember, 2006, that was the last year of sales we used for the 2007 rebound. So the quantity of sales, look how much higher it is than current 2009 sales. It's a, 2009's a small, small fraction of the number of sales that we have historically had.
Before you go on, because there's some, there's some relevancy to that, to that chart there, there's, there are a couple of things you might take away from that, one of which is that, is that people are asking more than what folks are willing to give for them, for those properties, and that would have an impact, even though you might not see the, a, a large deviation for, on your, on your assessed value of the property to what things are actually selling for, you're seeing a whole lot smaller population of sales. So what that's telling you is that people are not willing to sell when they're underwater, or where, or where they're in a situation where they wouldn't make any money off the sale, so they're holding on to properties. And what that's, what that's showing you there is that you do not have, I mean, there, there's another factor that's, that's, that's not numerical, that is, that people aren't willing to take a loss on their property to sell right now. And therefore, you're not getting as much confidence in your, in your deviations from the, on your, on your assessed values.
Right. And I was kind of going to touch on that. What I was going to say is that doing a reevaluation is challenging, because we have, let me move forward just one slide. Look at 2005, 2006, we had, you know, 2,000 sales, and we're using those sales to project out to 32, 33,000 parcels. So even though we had 10, 15% of sales in 2005, 2006, it was still challenging. So now, if you look at 2009 and 2010, not only do we have a lower quantity of sales, but look at the number of foreclosures.
Yeah.
In 2005, we had 10 foreclosures, 2006, we had 20. You see, it's, it's gotten higher and higher, 2009, 83, and 2010, we had 156 foreclosure distressed sales.
How do those foreclosures impact your measurements?
We do not, it's current industry standard that foreclosure sales are not considered.
So they're exempt.
Yeah, they, they are disqualified.
Because that would bring down, that would bring down your, your valuations quite a bit.
Absolutely, absolutely, because people go into foreclosures, and they're looking for a deal. A lot of the banks sell the foreclosed properties as is, because they don't know what's wrong with the property. There's no warranty, and people aren't willing to pay as much not having warranty on a property versus an arms-length transaction, so the appraisers, both the appraisers and tax appraisers, do not consider... So the appraisers, both fee appraisers and tax appraisers, do not consider distressed sales.
But isn't there a percentage when distressed sales get to, John, what were you telling me the other day?
50%.
When distressed sales become 50% of?
All sales. If they become the market, then we would have to consider that.
Okay. And this does not reflect short sales either?
Well, this is what you see in the blue or over all sales. And then in red, I'm not sure if Lisa included distressed sales or if she included short. What all did you include in that number?
It's basically just bank foreclosure.
Bank foreclosure, so it's not sure.
Because I know in my neighborhood alone, I know about three houses that sold from anywhere to 100,000 to 200,000 below their assessed value. So I, I guess it would be nice to know how that data factors in here also.
Right. Because that would limit our pool even further.
Yeah.
Yeah. That would, that would be included in with the all sales up there. The red is just the bank foreclosures. So your, your, your short sales would be included in with all. So that, yeah.
But you weren't comparing assessed value to sales price.
Yes.
You were?
Yeah, we just, there are other sales that we, that we kick out, not just foreclosures, but, you know, your short sales, sales between relatives, where we feel like, you know, the stamps aren't the, the, the whole price.
What was the sample that you used? Because you didn't use all 32,000 whatever sold and moved in the whole county, did you, or did you?
That, that's the entire parcels. That's the number of parcels we have in the, in the county. The number of total sales we had for 2010 is 1,140. That's all the sales.
That's total sales in Lee County.
Total everything. Yes, ma'am, up to date.
Whether it was residential or commercial or vacant?
Vacant or improved. Yeah, distressed sale, short sale, an arms-length transaction, that's total in that number. Yes, ma'am.
And that's what I was saying, we're basing, we have 32,000 parcels in Lee County. And we have only a small fraction of those that actually sell that we can use in a revaluation. So we're projecting market values or tax assessments for 32,000 parcels on a small, small fraction of those parcels. Because we only have 1,200 cells. As I was saying, it makes, it's hard in a, in a normal revaluation, given more cells, twice the cells. But now we have half the cells to use. And a lot more of those cells are distressed. And if you take into consideration your point of the short cells, this 1,140 number may be even lower.
It's actually 323 qualified in that.
So now the question is, is, are you going to explain to us subsequent in this presentation about how that impacts your decision or your recommendation to move forward with a revow sooner rather than later?
Okay. So we'll go over that. Any more questions on this?
When you're doing the evaluations over here, is commercial properties and residential properties mixed together?
Absolutely. Commercial, industrial, vacant land, red, all the, all the parcels. The staff values all the parcels based on cells they have.
But you're only comparing them to like properties when you do the valuation?
If it's commercial properties compared to a similar commercial, or similar commercial properties per Atlas. Okay, so 2013 versus 2015. The last revaluation was January 1, 2007. Legally, we have eight years before we have to do another revaluation, which will put us out to January 1, 2015. We're currently scheduled for January 1, 2013, based on the board's resolution from March 2009. So if we did a revaluation in 2013, as I showed you in the descriptive statistics, where I broke out classes, you can see that the commercial properties and the vacant land properties are very inequitable. So doing a 2013 revow would bring everything up to its current market value. Reduce those inequities between different classes of property. Personal property is effectively revalued every year. Public utilities, it all, it all ties in to the revaluation. And again, 2013, we would have to involve the community. Like I, I would like to do that. Just make sure, encourage everybody to go out, check their property record card, make sure that everything is accurate on there. And that'll in turn make for a much better quality product. And in 2015, the market could get better by 2015, or it could get worse. We just don't know what's going to happen. Based on those reasons, that's why we are recommending a, a 2013 revaluation to reduce those inequities we have within the market.
Dwayne, what's the cost of a revow to the taxpayers of Lee County?
The last revow in 2007, the county hired a consultant and hired temporary appraisers as well as a tax office staff. Now, that revow was a little different because it was a full re-listened measure. But the cost of that was, I think, around 600,000, including staff time, the consultant. I think that was a turnkey operation.
What was the net result in '07 from the return on the investment of the 600,000? What did it do to our tax base?
Property values increased by about 14%. Of the tax base. So it was a pretty good sum. Our tax base is 4.655 billion. And that's lower than what it was, but around 4.7 billion, you're looking at 14% of that.
Was this projected at the time? Was this anticipated? Could you?
I think actually they thought at the time they were going to get more than 14%. Linda, Lisa's shaking her head back there. But I think one of the things that was, maybe came in undervalued were the commercial and the industrial properties. And you can see it in the data now that there was some belief that they were a little low then. And they still appear to be low. This is a gut-wrenching decision for us. We've been, Dwayne and I have been talking about it for a couple of months. I've been talking with Lisa. Because really, they need to get started January 1st with what they have to do since we're doing most of it in-house. We haven't planned on hiring any consultants to help us with this because we don't have to do the full listing measure. But.
Here's a, here's a couple of points as a layman looking at this thing. I, I would, I would think that there are some folks in the county that, that would be pro-revaluation currently because they think they're paying too much in property taxes and they might get a break on a revow. And if you were to factor in some way in the number of foreclosures and distressed property sales, they might have a point that there are some cases, if everything was done fairly, that they might be, they might have overpaid, especially if they purchased in that '07 to, to 2010 period. They might have paid a little too much and they might be at a point where there would be other water in their mortgage and they might get a break on a revow. I, I use that word "might" with emphasis added. It appears from your data, a second point, appears from your data that the commercial properties are perceived to be undervalued. And that, that's where you're kind of hopeful of making up some, some ground and maybe raising the tax base of the county is in the commercial lands? Is that what you're thinking?
If it just goes straight by the ratios, you, you would believe that right now we would gain 4% in value.
The average property would increase by about 4%. But you're looking at commercial properties, higher-end commercial properties and higher-end vacant land properties. They are going to be the ones to increase the most. And 4% of a million is not the same as 4% of 100,000.
Right.
So since it's falling on the higher-end properties, we may actually see, well, depending on market data, but as it stands right now, we might actually see more than 4% in the tax base because of those higher-end properties.
It's conceivable, I'm asking, I'm actually asking this as a hypothetical question. It's conceivable that you might have some undervaluation in the commercial properties and some overvaluation in some residential properties that might offset to a degree?
Well, the, the residential properties are not overvalued. But effectively, if you look at the effect of tax rates, then yeah, the residential, lower-end residential, lower-end commercial will be paying more than the higher end just because of the current market values and what their tax assessed at. But they are not overvalued. They're just not as undervalued.
You're confident they're not overvalued?
Well, according to the ratios, according to the ratios, we're about 96% on residential properties.
Yeah, but didn't you also say that, that you don't not take into account all the foreclosures and all that in there as well?
So you're going to have, you're going to have people that come in on a request of Board of Equalization.
There you go.
They're going to want to use those as comps to say, my value should be lower. And that, and that's inherent in the risk here. And you know, that's why it's so gut-wrenching.
That's right.
You know, you know that there's going to be some issues that come up whether we do it now or, you know, two years from now. You know, revow is, is simply a redistribution of the tax burden.
Love that word redistribution.
Are you going to, at the end of this process or at the end of our, our documentation here? I'm wondering, you know, it's gut-wrenching, but you guys are paid to give us your best opinion, judgment. And I think I see here that you're saying that on balance, all of these things considered, you think 2013 is the time we need to go ahead as opposed to pushing it off two more years? Is that a, is that a clear understanding?
Yes, sir.
Your recommendation?
Yeah, because actually, I'm looking a little bit further than that. You know, because then we get this revow over with. And then if we get back on the four years, maybe things will look better in 2017.
I was going to ask you this.
You've got six years out there, not the next one, but the one beyond. And, you know, hopefully, things will, will, will improve. I'm, I'm kind of Mr. Womax Court here on, on the economy. You, you really haven't seen anything that's saying, okay, we're getting ready to go, you know, rolling down the road again. It's just like we're kind of at the bottom. We may stay here for a while, so.
I guess the other thing is that in the great chess match of revows, because you, what's the, what's the, the greatest frequency at which we would repeat a revow? If, if all of a sudden we saw the economy take off like gangbusters in two years? And would we then consider another revow in just two years after that? Or would we?
Only if your sales ratio went below 90%. Then the new law that they passed, was it last year or two years ago? That when it's 10% either up or down from 1%, it triggers a revow immediately. But otherwise, it would be four, it would be four years.
And the cost with that revow immediately is still borne by the county?
Yes, sir. But of course, you know, if it's, if it's, market prices are going up and you're going to pick up 10% increase in your value, you don't mind paying for the, the revow, so.
I would, you know, as an, as an advocate for the taxpayer, I guess the one thing that, that kind of weighs in my mind is, is that it might be better for the taxpayer if the revow occurred near-term rather than longer-term. As, as, as an individual taxpayer, not necessarily speaking for, for commercial businesses, but I'm thinking on the, on behalf of the individual, if, you know, Joe Q. Citizen was concerned about, well, if they do the revow now, my taxes might go up. Well, there's, there's probably a far greater likelihood their, their tax bases, their tax base on their, their property is going to go up four years from now rather than two years from now.
Depends on the mode of the economy.
Yeah. Unless it really takes a dive, much worse than where we are now.
And when I own property in Onslow County, they did a 20, 2006 revow. And one of my properties, the tax bill went down. And I'm not saying the tax bills in Lee County would go down. I'm just saying that there was such a disproportionate increase on the beach that effectively, the other portions of the county didn't have to pay as much. So I mean, it's, you never know what's going to happen in a revow.
That begs the question here, what, what's your confidence factor? You know, if you could assign a percent or an objective measure, what's your confidence factor that if we do this revow, if we voted to proceed so that, because immediately, you're going to start about the process of, of, of reevaluating the properties. In, in 2011, you're going to be looking at properties and then that, you're going to set that rate effective 2011. Or, I'm sorry, 2013, correct? Because you'll have completed the county by that time. What's your confidence that when we set that new rate, that you're going to actually have a net increase in the tax base?
And those are conditions we can't predict. That's what I was saying. We don't know what's going to happen between now and 2013 or now and 2015.
So why, why, why would you be promoting the move ahead now? If you, if you really can't predict, or you don't have a?
Well, as I said, there's a lot of inequity with the tax assessments.
Yeah.
We did a, we did a January 1, 2007 revow and those, those tax assessments today are less indicative of current market conditions.
Yeah, and that, that gap, that down arrow, you're beginning to see that spread so that these inequities are beginning to express themselves. And also the consideration, not only for the taxpayer, but for the county to sustain itself. We need to be looking at sources of revenue. And where there is an opportunity to grow, we need to take advantage of that. Is that not indicated in these figures? In other words, 4% to 5%, as I think I've seen here, is, is the upside. The, your best crystal balling right now as to the gain that we could realize based on certain classifications of property, not so much residential, but on the commercial end of things.
And we can only predict on the data that have occurred already. So we're looking at historical sales and we just don't know what's going to happen in the future. But what we do know is that 2009 sales and 2007 tax assessments are not very indicative of each other. And the point of doing, like Mr. Crumpton said, the point of doing a revow is to equalize everything. Bring everything to 100%, whether it be coming down or going up on a per-property basis.
So if we, just to be devil's advocate, if we said, no, we want to push it out to 2015, would that give you sort of a heartburn a little bit? Would you say, hmm, or?
Well, you know, it's, it was a tough decision. There are pros and cons for doing it 2013 and pros and cons for doing it 2015. And I don't feel that we'd have any heartburn if it were 2015. It's just, it's a very on-the-fence decision, I guess.
It's interesting that last week, I met with other managers and Chatham County and Harnett County are, they're on schedule for four-year and at the same time we are. So we would be revowing at the same time Chatham and Harnett would be. But Moore County and Wake County, who were on four, have pushed theirs back. And Orange County's, I believe their manager's getting ready to recommend that they push back theirs for two more years. So it's, 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 everybody's taking a look at it of a different way. And, and our way here is that we're really looking at, you know, there are some inequities. There's a, you know, is there a risk that we think the, the base is going to go down? I, I don't think the base is going to go down. Good. But I don't think so.
Of course, if we do it in 13, then we kind of lock in for the next four years, don't we? In other words, if the market really takes off, we are not going to enjoy the upside.
Unless it gets, is, takes our sales ratio down to 90%, then, then we can go again.
Right, interesting.
But I have to do, I mean, what is, what's the indication that the housing market or real estate market's going to take off anytime soon?
Well, one, one of the things that he didn't bring out here, and that is that, that surprisingly, through the recession, property values, particularly residential property values, retain some value here in Lee County, more so than the rest of the country and even in the state. I mean, we actually retained quite a bit of value in single-family, three-bedroom homes. We did, we did rather well. Some of it has to do with our geostrategic location and proximity to, to other areas where people want to, they want to live here and work elsewhere. But I would, I would argue that if you were, if you were, if we were going to be advocating on behalf, behalf of the local taxpayer, the local residential taxpayer, that doing the revow sooner rather than later probably, not, not for sure, but probably is to their advantage. If we push it out later, there's a much greater probability their, their rates are going to go up. Or, I'm sorry, their, their valuations are going to go up. And they're going to pay more in taxes over the mid to longer term as opposed to if we did the revow sooner. Because I think property values are down.
Tell you what, I think, I think it doesn't matter when you do it. It's not going to be any advantage for the taxpayer. Maybe.
John, is this something that has to be decided? If we decide to go with 2013, does it have to be decided before December 31st?
Well, you could decide at, at the next meeting, whether the next meeting be on the 20th or the first week of January. It's not going to, it's not.
So we could?
If you want to take a look at the data and discuss it amongst yourselves a little bit, I actually would encourage you to do that. And then we can throw it back on the agenda and make a final decision. But I'm sure as you start thinking through it, you know, you, we treat this like this is a business. And, you know, we have to have revenue. And this is our biggest piece of our revenue. So it's a, it's, I also understand that it's the most emotional piece for our taxpayers because property taxes, obviously, from the last couple of elections, you can tell that it's a, that it's a big issue. I don't think that's reached Raleigh yet, that people are concerned about property taxes. But it certainly has reached this room right here.
What's the pleasure of the board here?
Mrs. Chair, if I may real quick. I spoke with Mr. Crumpton and in March 2009, when the board decided to delay the 2011 revow to 2013, it was the same time we had the big budget crunch. So the tax office was able to give up two positions during that budget crunch because we weren't going to have to do an immediate revaluation. If we were to do the 2013, I would ask for that appraiser position back. The industry standard is about, if you're doing an in-house revaluation, for every 8,000 to 12,000 parcels, you need an appraiser. And we have 32,000 and two appraisers right now. So I would ask that. So, I would ask that that be considered. Since we are not contracting out, we're not hiring temporary appraisers, it's just gonna be me and the staff, that we have a full staff doing the 2013 revow.
And that would be your cost of, you know, the increased cost to do the revow would be that person.
Chair, I'll move if we move this to a January 1 meeting.
Okay. Motion has been made to postpone the decision on this revow until our first meeting in January. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make sure that staff go back and revisit the proposed recommendation for the day and see if it changes. There's been some discussion here in this meeting that might change their minds if we come forward with your recommendation.
And in January, we will have a full, we'll have a full 2010 sales. So, instead of carrying on 2009, we'll have that 2010 sales and see how that's moving along, which may be a better indication.
Let me ask you about the positions, because I don't disagree, you're gonna need at least one, possibly two. Are these, are you gonna retain these full-time, regular, permanent positions, or?
If we go to, if we go back to the four-year schedule, then yes, we'd like to keep them full-time. Because once you, when you do a revow, you usually spend a year, probably a year and a half afterwards, depending on hills, and keeping up on new construction. Then by that time, you've gotta start on the next revow, gotta start on the next revow. So, yes, I would recommend keeping those on board, and that's what happened between 2003 and '07.
One or two.
We'd recommend one at this time.
I'm not gonna recommend two. I don't even like doing that.
Any other further discussion? A motion is on the floor. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. If I can reserve a couple more minutes? Mr. Crumpton has asked that I discuss with the board the current tax collection revenue. I spoke with him, and as we know, current year revenues are not coming in like they should be. The current year collection rate is about three percent behind where it was last year, just current year. Now, that's not in itself alarming, because we can't do anything with current year taxes until they become delinquent. So, until January 6th, we can't really do anything with those taxes. So, it may be that in late December, early January, we may catch back up. But I have spoken with Mr. Crumpton about using some additional enforced collection measures that we have not used in the past, which are more aggressive, such as levying on equipment, vehicles, seizure of equipment. If it's, you know, if it's bad, these delinquent business tax bills are out, then we have to do something. And then getting that money in, like when we hired Zaccheaus, we got the additional tax delinquent monies in, allowed us to keep the tax rate as low as possible. And if we get this additional money in by using additional enforced collection measures, then that'll, it's more prudent to all the taxpayers. And those are options. It's not anything unlawful, but it is more aggressive, and I'm sure it's not gonna be popular with the public. But it is, these are things that other counties do. I know Moore County goes out to houses and knocks on doors. A lot of counties repossess vehicles, seize business equipment. So, those are some things that we will threaten, and hopefully, if we threaten that, they will come on through and see that we are serious. But revenues, they are slightly behind where they were last year, as indicated in the manager's report.
How much of that is attributed to the payment plan? 'Cause I know to help our taxpayers out, we also, instead of them paying in one lump sum, have given them the option to pay monthly, is?
Well, I guess my opinion on that is that the people that generally do the payment plans are those that would be delinquent. So, I see the people making payment plans, that's money that we have received this year that we might not have gotten last year. So, I'm not sure, I'm not sure which side of the coin that falls on.
I think what we discussed as far as the collection methods, that, you know, they're legal, and there are things that other counties do, it's just that we, we haven't really had as much problem with the business personal property tax collections and the vehicle property tax collections as we're having right now. You know, the real property seems to be tracked pretty well, but those vehicles, and so, we haven't gone out and towed vehicles, and taken them to a yard, and until you pay your taxes, get them back. So, we're starting, you know, we've been discussing that, and, you know, it's not a good time of year to start doing it, but, you know, after the first of the year, you know, we have a budget to make, and.
Is that, is that when we would revisit this?
Right.
It's actually, it's really his call, you know, and what I asked him to do, he said he was gonna, you know, that they were discussing it, and I said, we, we probably should discuss it with the board, so that number one, they know that we're getting ready to do these things. But it's really, you know, he, when you did the levy, and you told him to go collect, you know, he's supposed to use every legal means to, at his disposal, to collect. So, you know, what I told him is that we're not asking for permission, we're, we're informing you that if people don't start paying some of these tax bills, you know, to do his job, he's gonna have to, have to do these methods.
Let's make sure we're helping them all we can, you know, those that need help on paying their taxes, you know, 'cause anything we can do to help them, we need to do that, because times are tough.
Yes, sir.
And I mentioned that just because, as I told Mr. Crumpton, I'd like, even though it is allowed by law for the tax collector to use these methods, I would like for his support and the board's support, 'cause I'm sure the board will be getting calls on it.
I'd like to see us get a list of those measures that you plan to implement.
Absolutely.
And if any way possible, let's do a public service announcement that talks about that, so that people won't be surprised.
A lot of people are very stressed out, you know, I mean, they're trying to figure out how they're gonna make their tax payment. They've gotta figure out how they're gonna make mine, something.
Just to pick up on the public service announcement.
Look loose.
Hope that in addition to the public service announcement, you would amplify that. In other words, that there would be some type of discussion in the newspaper, or, you know, that's more, that's meaty, that talks about this, in a non-threatening way, but informs the public, as you have informed us, about the yin and yang of taxes support the government. We have to have the taxes to do that, yet we have to help, try to help taxpayers, not so much individually, but corporately as we can, to encourage them to stay ahead of, of these measures that you might have to take. I mean, it's, it's something people need to be alert to.
Right. And even if we do decide to go with those measures, we still have to give taxpayers due process. We still have to notify them, they have a right to appeal. So, it's, we won't be going to properties and without notice, towing vehicles, or seizing cash registers, or whatever they be, they will have due notice and due process. But yes, you know, you make a good point about public service, and we'll continue to do that and try to get the word out there.
Hey, you got anything else?
That's it, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got just a couple of items left. Would the board be amenable to a five-minute recess here?
I move that we take a five-minute recess.
We'll be in recess for five minutes. We're back in session. Next, we're coming out of recess. Was there any special language just used?
No, ma'am, you're going fine.
Okay. Managers' report, John?
I don't have a lot. The first thing I need to discuss is to make sure that y'all wanna meet on December 20th. I'm not aware that we have any public hearings with the planning board. There's really only one item that I know of, that's the Board of Education's looking for a capital budget approval, or something like that, so, that they wanted to have approved. But that's the only item I know of that, that, you know, we couldn't push off into the, to the first meeting in January. So, that meeting would be the 20th, that is a short week, 'cause of the Christmas holiday, so, up to the board whether they wanna meet.
What's the pleasure of the board here?
Let me ask you a question. What's the, what's the impact on the capital budget approval? If we don't do it December 20th?
It's on that request.
Did you say?
Well, I think we can push it off.
Okay.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay, let's push it off.
Okay, is there a motion? Some move to not have a, a second meeting in December. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes, okay?
Thank you, Senator Ross.
Two, two items for the board to be thinking about with the new members coming on. And also, it's that time of year, normally, January, February, we start talking about having a retreat or workshop, you know, where we need to be as a board and discuss, you know, goals and plans for the board. It's also a time where the Chamber of Commerce has asked for some time to come and talk to us about their visioning project, and maybe a good time for us to have some joint meetings with the city. City has a big interest in the animal control ordinance, I think it was discussed before. Any changes we make, they may make, so, maybe a good time, just something to think about. And also, it was asked, we need a delegate, and I think this can wait to the January meeting, we can be thinking about who we wanna send to the Legislative Goals Conference for the NCACC, which is January 12th through the 14th, I believe. So.
That's the conference?
That is where they sit down and they pass the, the book, for lack of a better word, of all their goals that they wanna lobby the legislature on. And obviously, there's gonna be a lot of discussion dealing with a Republican legislature instead of the Democratic legislature. The whole game's gonna change, and I'm sure they're gonna be looking for a lot of input from the commissioners, so.
So, that, that conference is when, though, John?
I think it's the 12th through the 14th. I'll have to go back and check my dates, but I'm, I know it's that week, I just keep, they like to do it right before they go back, and then the legislature goes back the following week.
Okay.
It's a good meeting. I always enjoyed going to it, but we got to appoint a sitting commissioner as a voting delegate. That's all I have. And welcome the new board members, look forward to working with them, and everyone, as usual.
Okay, well, thank you. Next on the agenda are, before we go into closed sessions, our commissioners' comments. And so, Commissioner Pascal?
Welcome to the returning commissioners and the new commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hayes?
Enjoying it so far, Jim.
That's great.
Yes, thank you. I have prepared a statement that was, that I wanted to share with you and to the public in the change of leadership for the, for the board, and if you'll indulge me just a moment, I'll go through it, and, but it's something I'd like to get on the record. And so, it's to my fellow commissioners, supporters, friends, and citizens of Lee County. Should the chairmanship of the Board of Commissioners change hands on December 6th, it will be a disappointment, but not a surprise to me, and perhaps others who voted for me in the November 2008 general election. I have been encouraged by many to stand for reelection, and I would add that I've congratulated the new chairman, and that is, that is good. If a change is required, any personal disappointment will be only momentary, for I- If a change is required, any personal disappointment will be only momentary, for I know that I have done my very best to serve as chairman of the Board of Commissioners honorably and intelligently on behalf of the, all of the citizens of Lee County these past two years. For that, I feel honored and grateful to the commissioners who placed me in a position of leadership and for that opportunity to do what I was elected to do. As I said right after the recent election, the tide comes in and the tide goes out. The red tide recently swept in and made some impressive gains and in the recent midterm elections. While I do not agree with or accept many of the arguments or premises on which those victory claims were made and won, I respect the electoral process. Only time will tell how and whether that change called for will serve the best interest of the public. I hope that it will. What is more important, however, is that regardless of the chairmanship, we as a team must continue to work hard to maintain the solid county government we inherited and have perpetuated during these past two years. I am pleased with the progress the Board of Commissioners has made on a number of important issues these past two years while I was privileged to be chairman. Among them are approval of a one-quarter penny sales tax to rebuild Lee County High School, fighting for jobs and competing hard to maintain and grow our prized business industrial base in the face of a horrendous economic recession over which we had absolutely no control. In higher education, moving the continuing education program from the old dilapidated Jonesboro campus to the W. B. Wicker Business Campus. This was a long-awaited achievement we made happen on behalf of Central Carolina Community College. And we have helped support as best we could a number of charitable organizations which build and protect our young citizens, others which offer quality of life, educational, and cultural opportunities where we felt survival could be at stake. Finally, I am pleased with our ability to work effectively with our excellent professional county management and our very fine county employees, giving them the tools and support they needed to help keep our beloved county safe and fiscally strong, though lean with high marks for, with high marks from accrediting institutions in the face of the economic sea change which we are experiencing. I look forward to the next two years of service on the Lee County Board of Commissioners, which may be more challenging than any we have ever faced. I am confident of what I can bring to the table and look forward to working with my fellow commissioners to support in the spirit of democratic debate the freedoms and way of life we enjoy. And I thank you very much and wish you a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
Just like to say, it's great being here. We're finally to the day we're rolling up our sleeves. And from what I've heard in the board today, it's gonna be a pleasure and joy to work with each one on the board. And I'd like to echo Richard's comments here. John has already provided information to help me understand some of the better processes of the county. And I'm looking forward to working with him and his group. And as I learn more, we'll get more involved. And so, I think it's gonna be a good year.
Thank you. Mr. Parks? Commissioner Odom?
Well, I'd just like to say I appreciate Commissioner Hayes' leadership the past two years. I have confidence in this new board and I'm ready to move ahead and do the taxpayers' business.
Mr. Walmick?
Yes, thank you. I too want to congratulate or thank Richard for his, his work over the last two years and congratulate Linda on taking the chair. I think it's what the voters wanted. And, and I look forward to working with, with Linda and the rest of the board members over the next few years to try to balance the budget and to make sure that the revenues and the expenditures are, are matched and that we have a, that we do the best we can on behalf of the taxpayers to try to reduce their cost of government. Believe that, that we've got a lot of, of new ideas that are, that are percolating here among the, among the new board members. I know I've spoken to others during the campaign about what they would like to do, what they'd like to see done differently in the future. And I know that, that there are some good ideas, particularly with Charlie and Linda and myself. We've, we've talked privately during the campaign. And I think there's some things that, that we can bring to the table that, that will be of great interest to the county manager and the staff. And, and we're energetic and, and I speak for myself and for Charlie, I believe, in knowing that we have a lot of, lot of energy that we're ready to pour into the process of, of looking at the budget line by line and trying to figure out what we can do smarter, better, and, or at least more efficiently. I thank all the board members for their tolerance of my long-windedness. I, I will work on that. And then, I also assure them that, that if there's any ever a time where they need to pull me aside and say, "Hey, that's not appropriate. Please tighten it up," well, I'll endeavor to do that. And if the public, if the public has the same, same sentiment, they, they feel free to give me a call. I'm in the phone book. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Reeves?
Thank you and Merry Christmas to everyone. Happy New Year. I've got a couple of things that I really, that are not commissioner con, commissioner concerns might be a better way of putting it. One, I'd like to ask our legal staff, and I don't know the diplomatic way to make this request, but to say, one of my pet peeves, not only in this county but in other counties, is when the boards of education are faced, like the county is, with distressful revenues. You know, everybody has a need for money. But one of the first things that I often hear is that if we don't get the money we need, we're gonna lay teachers off. I would like to know if there's a way that we can confine that, that, the use of that tactic to try and coerce us into providing more money than we can, that we know we can afford. In simple language, it's just that, it's my belief that if we're gonna have breakdown and problems with money, then it ought to start at the top down, not bottom up. It ought to start with some of that administrative staff. And, you know, if you know a way to help me with that, Mr. Hall and Dale over there, yeah, I would appreciate it very much. I, I know that in the past, we allocate the money to them and they decide how they're gonna spend it. But I would certainly ask this board to consider being on record indicating that, no, we're not gonna support the idea that the teachers are the first to go or the teachers assistants. You don't have to answer now. I can get back.
Some changes in the court. I mean, half the litigation, the county's had to go in the court even before they filed an answer. That's what happened down in Beaufort County.
Oh, yeah, I remember that. I read that.
Yeah. And as I say...
I think those are good points. Do you have some additional ones?
I have one more. I certainly feel and believe that it's high time that we start holding some kind of economic development meeting with the elected officials of the city. I think expansion and growth in this county is not gonna take place if we start engaging in, what's that dirty word?
Annexation.
Annexation. That's just not gonna help us. And we're trying to come out of the hole and trying to maintain where we are. So, the, the best rule of thumb is to remove staff at this point and start considering the boards meeting with the boards to talk about these problems.
Yep, I agree there. Anything else?
Oh, thank you.
Okay. I have just a couple of things. This is a busy week with lots of events going on. The Sanford Parade is tonight, so seven o'clock. So, I would encourage everyone to bundle up and, and attend that. There's also a Committee of 100 meeting on the 9th, which is Thursday. So, I would hope that, you know, most of us could attend that. I would like to request that my colleagues submit any priorities to Mr. Crumpton. I know that one of the things that's high on my list kind of plays off of a comment that Robert made and that's to review our inter-local agreements that we have with the county and the city to, to take a look at the cost benefit and, and to analyze those. So, I'm requesting that, you know, sometime before our January meeting, if you can just shoot him an email or send him a fax or whatever and let him know what issues you would like to see this board address that you consider pretty much high priority. I would also like to make a mention of committee assignments. I understand that's one of my roles, but I'm not gonna assume that, you know, I'm the best one to make those. So, okay, now, if you could get a list out of all of the board appointments, I guess instead of committees, board appointments that the commissioners are assigned to and get them to each of the, you know, with the frequency of when they meet and whatever. And then, please contact me if there, you know, some boards that you have an interest or a strength in that you would like to serve on. And last, but certainly not least, I would like to thank my colleagues for having the confidence in me to assume the responsibilities of chair. And I promise to you that I will take the role seriously and I will always, you know, give 150%. And I'll try not to pass out doing that.
Madam Chair, I got one other thing I just thought about and I want to bring it to the board. As y'all know, Lee County, there's been a discovery of natural gas. And I'm getting some calls from people wanting this board to get involved and help on the legislative end. You know, they're talking about, you know, when they drill, they got drills so deep and then they got to go out horizontal and then do fracking, they call it. And right now, our laws don't allow us to do that. So, I'd like for each member of this board to go ahead and be giving that some thought, what we can do to help move the process along. You know, they have to do an environmental study or whatever. I know they're doing this in Pennsylvania. I think that'd be a source of, probably a good source of income for the county through taxes. You know, I don't know how those taxes are assessed or whatever on the utilities, but I think it could be a good thing for Lee County. So, I'm going to employ y'all to, to just get some help.
So, that's one of Doc's priorities that we...
I got it down.
...submit to you. Okay.
It's written down.
Okay. I believe we need a motion to go into closed session.
So move.
He's got to, I think he's got, we gotta read the statute numbers, so...
I'm going to go into closed session to consider personnel matter per General Statute 143-318.11, Section A6. That's it.
So, we'll move to the small conference room over here. Is it available?
Yes, sir.